Good evening, everybody. If you could find a way to a seat, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. Again, welcome, everybody. Glad to see you for tonight's meeting. This is the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners on January 13th, 2025. It is 5:01 PM. We welcome you to our evening meeting. If everybody could please stand for the pledge to the flag. At this time, we'll take a brief moment of silence. This is a time for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. And it would be appropriate at this time to reflect on the state of California and the fires that are threatening and the deaths from those fires. Thank you. All right, thank you. Again, welcome, everybody. We'll go through a little bit of record-keeping here. I wanted to make note of some additions and deletions, modifications to the agenda. These have already been posted to the website, but wanted to alert you that Item 4B, which is a proclamation for Four Chaplains Day, was added to the agenda. And we have deleted Item Number 7. It was for the airport ground lease to be removed at the request of the applicant, and that will be returning at another meeting. Pardon me? 7J. Yes, that was Item 7J on consent. Thank you. The county offices are closed Monday, January 20th, for Martin Luther King Day. And want to alert you of our FlaglerCounty.gov Transparency Dashboard. At the dashboard, you can look up our citizens advisory boards to view open positions and learn more about them. This evening, we're filling a couple of positions, and this is how we know who's interested. You go to Transparency Dashboard, look at the openings, and then contact the office or fill out the applications. You can also view our capital projects. Each of them can be clicked on. There's a map that shows the location of our capital projects. You can see all the details, and also one for drainage maintenance, which is just our drainage projects. Upcoming commission meetings and workshops. We have our next regular meeting on Monday, February 10th, at 9:00 AM. There's only one meeting in February. All right, these reminders we'll do at the end of the meeting. So at this time, we will move to recognitions, proclamations, and presentations. And first up, Item 4A, Number 1, is our Flagler County Fire Rescue officially introduces Taco. Taco is the county's first therapy dog. He is now the ambassador for public outreach events, as well as to provide crucial comfort and support to those who need it most during traumatic events or circumstances. So if Chief Mike Tucker would come forward. Hello, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Danson and members of the commission. Obviously, it's great to be here. And for the record, I'm Michael Tucker, Fire Chief, Flagler County Fire Rescue. And I guess Taco's here. So, you know, we wanted to take the opportunity to introduce Taco to the members of the commission and to the citizens in the audience as well. You know, it was a little while back, Ms. Petito sent some information over to us about therapy dogs in the fire service. And it was something that we were aware of, was a growing trend. But obviously, you know, we took the opportunity and started to investigate how we could implement such a program. And, you know, Rob has been bringing Taco around the fire station for quite a while. And it didn't take me long to realize that Taco would be perfect for this role of a therapy dog, you know, for the firefighters and first responders. And so I approached Rob, and he immediately, you know, agreed to do it. So we began to look for training programs. We found one through Beavard County Sheriff's Office that does the Paulson Stripes Academy. And, you know, the irony of us sending a fire dog to a police school is interesting. But he came back well-educated, and he has proven his worth so far. You know, so we had the opportunity to go up to Jacksonville. Channel 4 up there wanted to do an interview with Rob and with Taco. He was an immediate hit, and the weather lady up there did the weather with Taco, you know, in her arms. You know, so she was actually holding him while she was doing the weather. And I think that when you came into the room, almost everybody stopped and talked to Taco or petted Taco. He has that same effect, you know, on everybody. And, you know, in addition to being a first responder, therapy dog, Taco has been visiting some of the CPR classes that we do as well. Recently, one of the ladies in the class had lost her husband recently and was having a pretty hard time. But when Taco, he could seem to sense what she was going through, and he parked himself right beside her for almost the entire class. And so his love and affection, he gives out freely to a lot of people. You just have to suffer through some of the, what Rob refers as taco glitter. That would be his fur. You know, so Taco's been a great addition to the team. You know, therapy dogs are a growing issue or growing trend in the fire service. The presence of a dog, you know, releases oxytocin, you know, and serotonin in the body. You know, they're chemicals that affect the mood. And they're scientifically proven to be beneficial to first responders. You know, obviously, we see some pretty significant things. And it's not the things that we see a lot of times that causes the impact. It's the inability to disconnect between the calls, you know, to get a little bit of downtime, to unplug from what you just witnessed. And Taco is a perfect opportunity for the guys and gals of Flagler County Fire Rescue to do that, unplug, you know, and to just begin to refocus on some of the things that are important in life. So we thank Rob for his willingness to, you know, to allow Taco to play with us. And we thank Taco, obviously, for his willingness to step up, you know, and be petted and receive lots of treats and lots of love. So I don't know if Rob wants to say anything, but...
Just a simple fact of thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be able to bring this feature into our department 100%. Thank you to Ms. Petito for starting us to get us to spearhead this program for us. You could just tell, you could just tell that as soon as he walks in the room, everybody's mood raises. It's unbelievable, the difference that he makes just in that way alone. But thank you all.
Is Taco fluent in typing? I thought he wrote "thank you." No?
A little close. He's good with the laser pointer.
He wants the microphone.
Thank you very much for supporting...
Thank you. This is awesome. I have not seen that news report, but I'll have to look that up.
Absolutely.
It's in the bulletin that Julie puts out. There's a link to that.
We'll send that to you.
Anybody comments for Taco?
I was hoping we could treat him like a class pet and take him home on the weekends, if that's okay.
He doesn't like to be more than 6, 8 feet away from dad at all times, so, yeah.
He is a natural. I mean, that's a great personality. That dog is, just attracts, like you said, attracts attention.
100%.
All right. Well, thank you, Taco. Taco picture. Don't go too far. Taco picture. You can bring him up.
Come on, Taco. Some Taco. I don't even like the dog. I like the dog, I don't like the food.
Come on in the middle.
Come on, Rob. Gotta be by you, baby.
Did I cover his bitch?
He's embarrassed. He's really embarrassed. Can you see his face? Are you serious?
Everything is downhill after you start off with Taco.
Now, we've got some good stuff on top of that.
All right, so now you're up for Flagler County Fire Rescue Life Saving Awards.
Yes, sir. You know, again, you know, Michael Tucker, Flagler County Fire Chief. And this is another one of those great opportunities that we have to come before you and to just brag about the department and the people, you know, that work for us and serve the citizens of Flagler County. So, you know, as part of our Life Saving Awards, this is Manny Matute and Wesley Libby. And just to give you an idea on the call that they were, that they're receiving the award for, this was a patient collapsed from a standing position. It was a witness CPR. Firefighter paramedic Matute was the primary medic on the call. He performed his duties at a very high standard, set in the tone for the call. Firefighter Libby, who is still relatively new to our FCFR family, performed his task to the highest levels of a seasoned veteran. His responsibilities included was airway management as well as chest compressions. FCFR performed this activity in a dim-lit parking lot. Firefighter paramedic Matute was able to overcome any obstacle that occurred, and he achieved what we call ROSC, which is return of spontaneous circulation, pulses, you know, back. And he quickly obtained a 12 lead EKG. The immediate response post ROSC was able to find a STEMI alert, which is an indication that the individual is having an actual heart attack. And so with the joint efforts of firefighter paramedic Matute and firefighter EMT Wesley Libby and the members of Palm Coast Fire Department, this man may have a second, will have a second chance, you know, in life. You know, so I want to take the opportunity to present Manny and Wesley with these certificates. Make sure I give them the right ones. And bars that they will be able to wear on their uniform, you know, indicating, you know, their success in doing such a great job, you know, serving as citizens. And, you know, Commissioner Danson, I want to point out that firefighter EMT Wesley Libby is our latest graduate from the Flagler Palm Coast High School Fire Leadership Academy.
Very good.
You know, so they just continue to perform at a phenomenal, you know, level. And from what I understand, the instructors that taught him in fire school, he's got a pretty strong career, you know, in Flagler County. And firefighter paramedic Matute is a great individual, a very solid performer within the organization, and just continues to be the calm, you know, in a storm. This is about as excited as you ever see him. So, you know, so I know his, their families and friends are here, you know, as well, so I... Yes, well, we had two more that were, you know, that were here to be awarded tonight, but obviously, you know, they're unable to attend. You know, but again, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to serve, and we appreciate the opportunity to recognize or find, you know, many women of Flagler County Fire Rescue.
Absolutely. Come up for a picture, too?
Oh, okay. Then we'll do a picture.
They're coming up. They saw Taco come up here, so...
You don't have to hold them, do you?
Come on up. Come on in the middle. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Get it?
Very much appreciate it.
Great to see youngsters coming up through the program, starting off at FPC through the Fire Academy there, and then becoming superstars in the fire rescue department. So anybody else have anything to add? All right. Well, thank you again, Chief. Appreciate that. And as I understand, the other two are on their way back from a call, so we will keep an opening, a standby. So when they come in, I'll keep alert to their presence. All right, so we'll move to proclamations. First is a stalking awareness month proclamation for January 2025. This is requested by Candy Wilkie, the Family Life Center Services Coordinator. This will be read by Commissioner Pennington.
This is a proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners, recognizing the month of January 2025 as National Stalking Awareness Month. Whereas under the laws of all 50 states, the U.S. Territories, the District of Columbia, and the federal government, stalking is a crime. And whereas up to 7.5 million people are stalked in a one-year period in the United States, and the majority of victims are stalked by someone they know. And whereas three in four women killed by an intimate partner have been stalked by that intimate partner. Whereas many stalking victims lose time from work and experience serious psychological distress and lost productivity at a much higher rate than the general population. And whereas many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs, and obtaining protection orders. And whereas many stalkers use technologies such as cell phones, global positioning systems, cameras, and spyware to monitor and track their victims. And whereas there is a need for a great public awareness about the nature, criminality, and potential lethality of stalking. And whereas the criminal justice system can enhance their responses to stalking by regular training and assertive investigation and prosecution of the crime. And whereas laws and public policies must be continually adapted to keep pace with new tactics used by stalkers. And whereas the communities can better combat stalking by adopting multidisciplinary responses by teams of local agencies and organizations, and providing more and better victim services. And whereas the Family Life Center is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Bonnell in the United States to observe National Stalking Awareness Month. And whereas the Flagler County Advocate Alliance is working to increase public understanding of this problem and mobilize community efforts to end stalking. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that we hereby declare January 2025 as National Stalking Awareness Month in Flagler County, and we applaud the efforts of the many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and private sector supporters for their efforts in promoting awareness about stalking. This is adopted the 13th of January 2025 and attested by Tom Bexley, the clerk, and our Chair, Andy Danson. Are they in the audience?
Come on up.
While they come up, Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve making stalking awareness month January 2025.
I'd have a motion by Commissioner Pennington, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. All those in favor signify with aye.
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 Any opposed? Non-motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Welcome. Candy, have a few words? Okay, great. Just introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ren Prokopovich. I am the youth advocate of Family Life Center. I'd like to start off by thanking everyone for being here today. January marks National Stalking Awareness Month. We take this time to raise awareness of the crime that affects nearly 13.5 million Americans yearly. This crime disrupts the lives of nearly one in every three women and one in every six men, causing them to live in fear and uncertainty for the safety of their lives and the lives of the people they hold dear. In some cases, about 2% of that population result in homicide. In perspective, that is nearly 270,000 lives lost yearly to this crime. And although stalking affects people of all ages, young people are being affected by it the most. At over half of the survivors of stalking reported having first experienced being stalked before the age of 25. In this study conducted where this was found, a fourth of the survivors reporting being victimized before the age of 18. Stalkers can be anyone, any gender, background, or ethnicity. They use many tactics ranging from surveillance of their victims to threats and intimidation, invading their lives, or even sabotaging and attacking them. This month, we urge you to, if you have not already, to educate yourself on stalking, its effects, and the signs someone may be experiencing it. We can only fight to end the perpetration of this crime together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, you're next, so don't go far. All right, with, do you want to do one picture for each, or? Okay, okay. So we'll go ahead and read the next proclamation, which is Human Trafficking Awareness Month for January 2025. And that's being read by Commissioner Richardson.
This proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners recognizes recognizing the month of January 25th as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. I will read slower than other people. Whereas human trafficking is the recruitment harboring, trans... Whereas human trafficking is the recruitment harboring, transportation provision, or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, coercion, for the purpose of forced labor or sexual servitude. And whereas human trafficking is a $32 billion a year global criminal enterprise and is crime as well as civil and human rights violation, and an estimated 25 million people are currently victims of human trafficking for both sex and labor. And whereas human traffickers prey on their victims by promising a life of hope and greater opportunity while delivering only enslavement. Instead of delivering people to better lives, traffickers unjustifiably profit from the labor of, and the toil of their victims who they force through violence and intimidation to work in brothels and factories and farms and fishing vessels, in private homes, and in countless industries. And where January is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we commit ourselves to eradicating the evil of enslavement. Human trafficking is a modern form of the oldest and most barbaric type of exploitation, and we proclaim it has no place in our world, our nation, our city. And whereas this month will not simply reflect on the appalling reality, we also pledge to do all we, all of the power to end the horrific practice of human trafficking that plagues innocent victims, not only around the world, but in our own neighborhoods. And whereas most, more awareness and education is crucial in eradicating human trafficking in our community, state, and nation. And whereas Flagler County Advocates Alliance is working together to increase public understanding of this problem and mobilize community efforts to end human trafficking. And whereas Human Trafficking Awareness Day is observed on January 11th in municipalities across the country to educate the public and raise awareness about human trafficking. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that they hereby declare January 2025 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Flagler County, and urge the citizens of Flagler County to become a part of the community response to end human trafficking and to send the message that there is, that this crime will not be tolerated in our community. Adopted this 13th day of January 2025. Can I get a motion on this, please? I make the motion, and I make the motion that we approve this proclamation.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Carney. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Who's going to speak? All right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Shannon. I'm the Sexual Assault Services Coordinator for Family Life Center overseeing both Flagler and Volusia Counties. I want to first thank, say thank you to my entire team of social justice warriors, our entire Family Life Center family, as well as the sexual violence warriors who came before us, who ran toward the flames to make sure future survivors did not have the same barriers, and everyone who continues to provide top-notch services to our survivors along their journey. Back when I first started my work in the SV field, human trafficking was not a term that was widely known at all. And just in the past decade, the education and awareness around this issue has increased more and more, and to witness the progression has been so awe-inspiring. However, we still have a lot of work to do as not only a city, but as a nation. Behind every statistic is a person. It's someone's mother, father, brother, or sister. In 2023, Florida was ranked number three in the United States for highest human trafficking statistics. There were 781 cases reported and a total of 1,253 victims, with 25% of those victims being children, as young as age four, and the average ages being 13 to 14. Sexual exploitation earns up to 66% of the global profits of human trafficking, and the majority of these are children. Their pimps are profiting $200,000 per child per year. So how do we get the prevention out there to children? Our program has aimed to target the adolescent population, and we work with runaway youth to educate them about the dangers. It's estimated that of all child runaways, one in three are approached by a trafficker within just 48 hours of them leaving their homes. And if you factor in a child's access to social media, the statistics are only going to increase. Also, we often think about the villain behind the phone screen, but the reality is that 90% of commercial sexual exploitation starts within the victim's home. It's perpetrated by a family member, it could be a close family friend, but most of these children will be entered into commercial sexual exploitation around five years old, and for some, it will begin as early as infancy. We still have a ways to go with prevention, and we are grateful to not be fighting the fight alone. These proclamations and allowing us the platform to say the difficult words out loud on behalf of every single survivor and their families who walk through our door allows their voices to be heard and understandably difficult storytelling to fall on the ears of the people who can help them, and there's no judgment and the shame dies. We appreciate you for welcoming us, prioritizing human trafficking, understanding that it has absolutely no place in our communities, and that when it does happen, we are there to empower and guide our survivors to healing from the unimaginable. We couldn't do any of this without your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody with comments for the group? Thank you so much for everything you do. We put a lot into a very short period of time for both of those proclamations, but very powerful messages by both of you. Thank you. And we'll come, if you want to come up, we'll take a picture. Good job. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Chief, did we get a signal yet? Okay. Do you want to do that before the proclamation? Okay, so first, we'll have Chief Tucker up again. This is for the Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month proclamation for January 2025. Commissioner Hanson will read this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation of Flagler County Board of County Commissioners recognizing the month of January 2025 as Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas cancer is the most dangerous, under-recognized threat to the health and safety of our firefighters, and occupational cancer is the leading cause of line-of-death duties in the fire service with a direct correlation of chemical exposures on the job. And whereas firefighters have a 9% greater chance of being diagnosed with cancer and a 14% greater chance of dying from cancer than the general United States population. And whereas scientific evidence showing a direct correlation between firefighting and certain cancers steered the 2019 Florida Legislature to enact legislation mandating employer-funded cancer benefits for firefighters. And whereas there are over 200 known chemicals and contaminants found in smoke that our firefighters interact with as a routine part of their occupations, which soil their personal protective equipment and everything it comes in contact with, increasing their risk of developing cancer. And whereas critical and immediate need for additional protective equipment to help firefighters avoid inhalation and skin exposure to known and suspected occupational carcinogens lead the Florida Legislature in 2020 to develop the Firefighting Cancer Decontamination Equipment Grant Program to provide financial assistance to help fire departments procure equipment, supplies, and educational training. And whereas 67% of firefighters recognized on the International Association of Firefighters' Memorial Wall have died of cancer between 2002 and 2020. And whereas the noble profession of firefighting already comes with a myriad of dangerous and life-threatening risks, additional awareness and support of the increased exposure to cancer-causing carcinogens is paramount to the safety of those that choose this profession. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that they hereby declare January 2025 as Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month to help provide firefighters the necessary tools and guidance to develop life-saving protocols for cancer prevention and to support those with a cancer diagnosis. Bringing increased public awareness to the danger firefighters face on a day-to-day basis being exposed to cancer-causing carcinogens. Adopted this 13th day of January, attested by Tom Bexley, clerk of the court, and signed by our Chair Andrew Dance. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve January 2025 as Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, thank you. Good to see you again, sir.
Yeah, good evening again, you know, Chair Dance and Commissioners. You know, it is, it's always a good opportunity to come before you, and we generally enjoy the opportunity to come and brag about the department. But as Commissioner Hanson read off in some of those statistics, this is a pretty sobering issue for us, you know, in the fire service. You know, I'm not going to go through all of the statistics, but I can tell you that I'm now in my 40th year, you know, of doing this job. And when I got into this business, it was the, it was the flames that that concerned you. Those were the things that you thought was going to, was going to, could get you, and now it's the stuff in the smoke, you know, that causes the biggest danger. You know, so, and it has become an issue, you know, in recruiting people into the field, because when you talk about the joys of the job, you know, the dangers of the job go with it, you know, as well. But we want to say thank you for, one, making this proclamation and adopting it, but we also want to say thank you for your support, you know, over the past several years, continuing to give us the tools and equipment and the resources to make the men and women of Flagler County Fire Rescue safer. You know, you have provided, you know, us to apply for the Cancer Decon Grant, which was mentioned, you know, in the proclamation, which we're going to be purchasing two additional washer extractors for the bunker gear, so they can wash the gear as soon as they get done with the fire when they get back to the station. You know, that is going to save the county $20,000 and make our firefighters safer. You know, we want to thank you for the self-contained breathing apparatus, you know, the air packs, you know, that we wear. Those are not a cheap endeavor, you know, but you have made those available to us. You know, we now have an individual mask for every firefighter, so that we're not sharing masks from person to person, which has a whole, another level of risk. You know, there's a second, or not quite a second set of gear, but there's a spare piece of gear for every single firefighter, so that when they come back from the fire and they wash their gear, they can get into a dry, clean set of gear until their gear is back, you know, in service. That's a commitment from you all, you know, and we thank you so much for continuing to support us. You know, we're safer because of what you do for us, and we continue to be proud to serve the men and women that live and reside in Flagler County, you know, Fire Rescue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sobering is right. I mean, tough statistics.
Yes, sir. So, no, and I would like to call off the rest of my team that's here, so we can do the picture with them if it's all right.
That'd be great.
That's you guys. They're not very photogenic prone, so.
They're very photogenic. Here's a taco. Hey, taco. Taco's getting manhandled. All right, thank you.
I'm not going to make you stand up there with...
All yours.
Okay, this is the Flagler County Fire Rescue Show.
That's right.
Tonight, so, you know, again, you know, Prince Mac, who is a rescue supervisor for us, and Ronald Cowan were on a call, you know, when we began the meeting, so they've been able to make it here at this time. But I want to go ahead and point out to you the, the write-up that was submitted, you know, along with this, what's leading to their award. Rescue Supervisor Mac and firefighter Cowan were dispatched to a medical call with an undetermined ailment. They were met with an unresponsive 42-year-old male who they determined to be pulseless. The male had previously been complaining of feeling profoundly unwell, suddenly and quickly deteriorate into, during the 911 dispatch time. They promptly began providing CPR upon arrival and obtained, again, ROSC, that return of spontaneous circulation, shortly after delivering defibrillation. Rescue Supervisor Mac performed proper follow-up care and determined this patient had, again, a STEMI, calling the alert to the hospital and transporting the patient to Palm Coast Hospital for Intervention. The patient was recovering from the arrest so well that he required sedation from what we call rapid sequence induction. You know, and that is a, that is a pretty significant medical term, it's a pretty significant, you know, event, but, which he managed well. The patient was discharged less than a week later with zero neurological deficit. Rescue Mac, as well as firefighter Cowan, provided the high level of care as continually provided by Flagler County Fire Rescue, so I want to go ahead and ask them to step up here if they would. PMAC. That one's yours. I'll give you something. You know, and again, Prince Mac has got a chest full of these things. He is one of our individuals who just seems to be in the right place at the right time for a lot of people. Matter of fact, I don't even remember about two years ago, he was the individual who was standing in line at Chick-fil-A when an individual began to choke, and so he was there, you know, at a, at a moment's notice and saved that individual's life, you know, as well. So thank you for, again, for allowing us the opportunity to, you know, to brag about our members and to show off a little bit what they do. And actually, Chair Dance, I forgot to tell you that Wesley Libby's father is actually a Flagler County Sheriff's deputy, and he decided to join us instead of going to the dark side. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Come on up top.
We'll look there, we'll look there.
Come up to the, around the circle and come up top. All right. Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. This is for Four Chaplains Day for February 3rd, 2025. This is requested by American Legion Post 115. This will be read by Commissioner Carney.
A proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners designating February 3rd, 2025 as Four Chaplains Day. Whereas February 3rd, 2025 will mark the 82nd anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship US AT Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four U.S. Army chaplains of three faiths who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas these four chaplains, Roman Catholic, Jewish, and Protestant, gave their own life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas the heroic deeds of Chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Goody, Lieutenant John P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark V. Polling, and their combined...
All right. All right, one more proclamation. This is for Four Chaplains Day for February 3, 2025. This is requested by American Legion Post 115. This will be read by Commissioner Carney.
A proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners designating February 3, 2025 as Four Chaplains Day. Whereas February 3, 2025 will mark the 82nd anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship US AT Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four U.S. Army chaplains of three faiths who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas these four chaplains, Roman Catholic, Jewish, and Protestant, gave their own life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas the heroic deeds of Chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Goody, Lieutenant John P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark V. Poling, and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom will be an inspiring and ever-shining example of real brotherhood for all time to the people of the world. And whereas we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice to the common cause of human freedom and justice for all shall not have been in vain. Now therefore, the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners do hereby designate February 3, 2025 as Four Chaplains Day and encourage Flagler County residents to commemorate the day with the appropriate observation, observances of this ultimate sacrifice. Adopted this 13th day of January 2025, attested Tom Bexley, clerk of, clerk and Circuit Court comptroller, and Flagler County Board of County Commissioner Chairman Andrew Dance. I would like to make a motion that we proclaim February 3 as Four Chaplains Day in Flagler County.
I'll second it. I have a motion by Commissioner Carney, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Anybody from American Legion Post here this evening? All right, seeing no one come up, we will bring this to, Commissioner Carney will be in attendance at the ceremony and will bring that proclamation to the participants. And thank you. All right, that's the end of our proclamations. Thank you, everybody. This will bring us to community outreach. This is a 30-minute time period that's been allocated for public comment on any consent agenda item or topic that is not on the agenda. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to address the commission. Speakers should approach the podium, identify themselves, and direct comments to the Chair. And at this time, I'll open the floor for public comment. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name's John Tanner. I live at 5,000 John Anderson Highway, Flagler Beach, which is actually Flagler County, but they call themselves Flagler Beach. I'm not here as an attorney. I'm here as a resident of John Anderson Highway and I represent my wife and I. And it's our concern as well as others. There was a recent article, I believe in Flagler Live, by a representative of the county attorney's office indicating that the county could enter into an agreement with the city of Flagler Beach and compel citizens who currently live in the county that would be in the enclave that would be created if they annex and compel them to accept annexation or would be annexed into the city. In other words, they're, and some of the men and women concerned fearful of being totally no longer county residents, but now you're city residents, you're going to be subjected to city taxes, city regs, and all the things that go with the benefits of living in the big city. And they wanted to remain county residents, certainly not city of Flagler Beach residents, no harm or disfavor reflected on the city. And they would like perhaps the county attorney's office or maybe a resolution from the commission. I'm not sure what the solution is, but some assurance to the citizens who not only live in the, what would become an enclave, but also the citizens of John Anderson. Because if, if the county was in the business of compelling county citizens to become city of Flagler Beach citizens, if they, if they start there, who knows where they could end with a less wise commission than this. And we'd like to not see that precedent set. There are, there are some citizens from the area who actually live in the area that would become an enclave if the annexation went through that I believe may want to speak and, or, and they may not. But I think several of them want to come up. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir. Next speaker. Take them to the clerk right there. At least get one there and we'll pass them around. This one.
My name is Sandra Elliott Schultheis and I live at 5403 John Anderson Highway, Flagler Beach, which is the unincorporated area of Flagler County on John Anderson Highway. Along with, I might remind you, as you know, the veranda as an unincorporated area. So we do have a say in this matter. What I passed out, I think you're very aware of it. This has gone in front of various state and local people, I mean, the local state, county, and Department of Transportation. They all have concerns about the veranda. They have issues with where they're going to get this water and the police, the schools, the infrastructure to support this project. They, veranda started out with an approval by the board for 453 homes on both sides. They went to 2,700 homes. Now they want to do the 453 on the east side. Because of the enclave, they want to go ahead now and build on the commercial side and then get that into, in other words, they don't have a plan. And the city of Flagler Beach, I've attended these meetings, the city of Flagler Beach doesn't have a plan. All of these state agencies are addressing this and they have concerns. And you, as our Board of Directors, which I dearly love you all and thank you for letting me talk, right here, your mission is, the Flagler County is to provide high-quality services through a responsive workforce commitment to excellence, integrity in collaboration with the cities and act as a fiscally responsible steward. I wish you would do this. I wish you would address this, see what you can do, and see if you can come to some kind of an agreement that will satisfy not only the state, local, but also the residents, the people that love Flagler County and love living here. These people don't live here that own this property. They live in North Carolina. They could care less what happens to it. All they're looking at are dollars. And I just found out that there is a new, where you were putting apartments in over where the airport is, that's now going commercial. And it's a fairly good-sized piece of property. So we got BJ's, we got more commercial there, and this guy wants to do commercial on the west side now. So just take a look at it. Try to protect us, please. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Cameron Orr. I emailed my, kind of my comments to each of you and Ms. Petito yesterday afternoon, so I don't intend to go over all of them. But since we've got two new commissioners on the board, I just wanted to highlight some things that we've been talking about animal welfare since last June. A group of citizens came together and started addressing this council about animal welfare issues in our county. A lot of the data came from the University of Florida Veterinary School. We're one of only 13 counties in the state that does not have a municipal shelter. We have not built a new shelter kennel in the last 20 years in this county despite the growth of this county. So we've tried to highlight that issue and the need for additional kennel space within the county. We had a joint City of Palm Coast County meeting in the end of August, August 28, and to address this issue. Following that, we had this group of citizens get together and kind of form what we call Animal Refuge Flagler, ARF. And we set out in, really at the request of Palm Coast, to really establish some facts on what it would take to establish a new filter and what it would take to operate that. So as a group, we, in late November, traveled over 1,000 miles throughout the state, visiting several different municipal shelters, gathering data on what it took to build their shelter, what it takes to operate it, and the like. And back in, in the 8th of December, after we had already kind of decided our legislative priorities were not going to include a new shelter this year, we presented kind of a final report. And I think some of the highlights from that, I just wanted to go over, was during the testimony at the joint meeting, it was said that it would take 80 to 100 million dollars to establish a new shelter. In no case did we find anything close to that. The most expensive shelter was in Clay County, which is twice our size, has a per capita income 50% higher than Flagler, and they're going to spend 20 million. Citrus County, who's smaller than Flagler, is going to spend 12 million dollars, million dollars this year. Lake County spent nine in 2020 building their shelter. And Putnam County will open their new shelter in late February, early March. And they did it on the cheap for less than 2 million dollars with a pole barn-style shelter on the law enforcement complex within Putnam County. I know we have not made the legislative list, but I would urge you, there are several different ways that we can gain funds for this. The USDA actually has grants to establish shelters for the rural, semi-rural counties and many other private organizations do grants for shelters to help do that. So we stand ready to assist you in any way we can to help with finding funding, any data you might need, but we urge you to continue to look for ways to establish a municipal shelter within Flagler.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to be back in front of you all and welcome. Wendy Tramarchi, Flagler County resident and current longtime Vero Beach and Indian River County Humane Society Board Member and past first responder for the National ASPCA. The Flagler County Animal Control Officer, currently up on animal control charges and not allowed to work cases or go into the field because of those pending charges, is sharing with others in the county that a county commissioner contacted her to deem a dog residing in the hammock to be dangerous for biting another dog. When told she couldn't because of her own act of cruelty case, they still wanted her to put a case together against this dog. We would like to know how a commissioner, or was it a board decision, can make a personal ask from an employee, not of the county, even though it's taxpayer money that pays this animal control officer's salary. The animal control officer is also sharing that she can now use the commissioner contracting her that the county commission has no issues with her work ethics since they are asking her to do a favor for them in leaving a dog in a crate bleeding and in pain with no vet care. Well, if that's ethics that our county commissioners think is okay, it's not. So I think we should know what commissioner thinks it's okay to have someone go and do a personal favor of deeming a dog dangerous. What right do they have to do that or expertise? Normally, a bite case between dogs is handled by the owners privately or done with a police report if warranted, not a county commission decision. Dog biting another unusually is usually not deemed a dangerous dog. All dogs should be leashed or contained. It is the owner's responsibility, not the dog's, to get loose. The owner's responsibility to make sure that animal doesn't get away from her or him. And now that there's a criminal ongoing case with this animal, there's a criminal case going on now.
I'll have to let you know, though, there's, there's.
She's sharing.
Excuse me. There's no public comment for that agenda item. And so this is, seems like an about way to make public comment on an item that's on the agenda. So if it's concerning.
I didn't know that till today that that was on.
Okay, so we'll just have to hold off on comments regarding what's on the agenda.
And can I do that later during that?
There's no public comment on that item. By statute, by the way, that that is presented. So the only reason I interrupted you is because it's, it's not allowed then, so it was not appropriate now.
Good now. Okay, I appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Charles Meekins. I live at 710 John Anderson Highway. And my father bought the property back in the early 50s. We've been there all my life. My sister Anne Lowman lives next door and my other sister owns a property there. We've invested a lot of money and a lot of our lives into this property. And if it's taken into, annexed into the city, it's going to change our lives so much. We, the wells, I have bees out back, chickens. It's been that way my whole life and it's just going to completely change our lives and for the worst. So I just beg of y'all to consider this because this is from an outside source wanting to change this. And for that, I don't agree with it. So that's basically what it is. I'm trying to keep my head afloat and keep my life the way it's been for years and years. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. Anne Meekins Lowman. I grew up on John Anderson Highway and we loved our way of life. I went to the big city in Miami to go to college and teach school there for 15 years. But boy, was I happy to come back to Flagler Beach after that tour of duty in the big city. We love our simple life on John Anderson. I worry about the impact of annexation, not just on our own selfish lives, but, but down the road, we live on a two-lane blacktop. It's called a highway, but it's not. And in evacuation times, other weather impact times when Walter Boardman is flooded and High Bridge is flooded, everybody's going to be cruising right past my house on John Anderson. I just, I worry about the impact of, I hate to say progress because that's not it. We don't hate progress. It's just, we're begging you to let us be grandfathered in with our water treatment programs and, and our septic systems that far exceed the level of expectation. We don't cause an impact on the land and I just wish that we wouldn't have to be annexed. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Evening, again.
Good evening. Hello again, Darlene Shelley. I live in Palm Coast. On the consent agenda tonight, there's a nearly 12 million dollar airport upgrade for an additional 5 million dollars, over 675,000 in bank loans with no identified protections for the local residents. The flight school, training flights, are circling over our homes, schools, hospitals, and businesses hundreds of times each day in squadrons of up to six aircraft or more in circular patterns. The safety concerns from the chemicals and pollution from over 700 pounds of lead annually are a threat to every single resident, not just to our hero first responders and firefighters. A lawsuit filed in Seattle, Washington in 2023 sums it up succinctly and states that people have the right, well-recognized by the laws of trespass, nuisance, and negligence, not to have defendants dump pollutants all over their property with the assistance, permission, and encouragement of a government agency. They are entitled to breathe clean air and live on uncontaminated land. They should not have to resign themselves to becoming sick and/or being unreasonably exposed to the risk of disease or to watching their children become sick or to be exposed to an increased risk of disease to enable defendants' commercial profits. In addition, goes on to say, "In additions to public nuisance, the lawsuit brings claim of negligence, continuing intentional trespass and violation of inverse condemnation laws against the airport. They seek to hold defendants accountable for funding a cleanup of the area and compensating residents for the loss of use and enjoyment of their property and establishing a medical monitoring fund." For years, the community has been coming forward to you to ask for help in protecting us from, not the airport, protecting us from the flight schools that violate our peace, our welfare, pollute. our welfare, pollute our water and air, and unfairly take away our rights to peaceful enjoyment of our own homes." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Caleb Hathaway, 5305 John Anderson Highway. I'm pretty much coming here to bring awareness, the Brandon Bay annexation. I know everyone's probably a little bit knowledgeable about this, but as Representative Forever Flagler, as well as the Flagler County Historical Society's social advocacy program, I hope to bring light to the importance of this property. I hope the county commission can represent the constituents on John Anderson, as well as the county entirely, in this situation and in the issue that we're seeing. I know people have already brought this up. I don't want to tread the same ground, but there's many objections about the state. There's many lack of information in this situation, and I think the property at hand that is threatened by this overdevelopment, which we've seen across the entire county, is very important, both historically, culturally, and environmentally. And again, I just want to bring awareness to this, and I hope we have the county, you know, solidly behind the constituents, and hopefully there's a resolution that could come from the situation. The proposal had been withdrawn, as we know, but this property, which is about eight hundred ninety-nine acres, is eventually going to try to be developed, and it would be in the best interests of everyone around Flagler Beach, Palm Coast, the entire county, that it would be protected, preserved, developed smartly, not overdeveloped, that it would destroy the environment in many, in many ways. The list can go on. But I've just come up here as someone, you know, deeply invested in the future. I'm eighteen years old. I go to the high school. I intend to stay in the county for as long as I can and enjoy this community. I've loved this place since I've grown up. I've seen, though, it's grown substantially. It continues to grow. People love Florida, as we know, but it's important that these topics are on our minds, that the future and the growth that we are planning is smart and efficient. It's promoting our quality of life and not threatening it. And this issue is just one on top of many, but I think, you know, as we've, people have already mentioned, I don't want to again, continue to repeat myself, but just keep, you know, keep it on our minds, and hopefully, as you guys, I trust the county commission to be on our side. But that's a lie for, good evening.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Thank you. Speak into the mic.
Okay, my name's Alan Sanford, 14 Treetop Circle. And I always just wanted to bring up a little bit about what people call dark sky lighting. I didn't know if anyone is familiar with dark sky lighting or what it is. It basically is a responsible outdoor lighting, and, and what it's for. A lot of communities are adopting it, a lot of towns, a lot of communities, a lot of places, to great success. Because when areas are developing at the rate like ours is right now, and keeping in mind the 2025, I mean, 2050, Flagler 2050, and our goals for quality of life and our vision for the county going forward, one simple way, very simple way of helping to reduce some of the friction and soften the edges between developers and residents could simply be a common sense step of incorporating, adopting some reasonable outdoor lighting practices, which is called dark sky lighting. That's just a term. Decades of scientific research have time-tested guidelines for responsible outdoor lighting. The results define the term dark sky lighting. It's not an arbitrary term. There are very clear guidelines and standards that have long been accepted in this field. The benefits are win-win for everyone. For the developer, it saves them a ton of money because they don't have to spend as much in lighting, because now the technology that we have now is so much better than what it used to be. We, you know, with the current technology, we have motion sensors, we have low-light-capable security cameras, low-light-capable security cameras, which are able to see things and record things with very low, low amount of light, which help for security as far as people who have concerns for that sort of thing. But yeah, so, and when you look at these guidelines, they're very clear, and, and you can go over from one, one through five. Use light only if it's needed. All light should have a clear purpose and consider how the use of light, consider how the use of light will impact the area, including wildlife and their habitats. Well, in my situation, I guess I would be the, the wildlife and the habitat that lives next door to a development that's getting, getting ready to have a lot of lights. But targeted direct light so that it falls only where it's needed. Use shielding and careful aiming to target the direction of the light beam so it points downward, it doesn't spill beyond where it's needed. Light should be no brighter than necessary. Use the lowest level of light required. Be mindful of surface conditions, as some surfaces may reflect more light into the night sky than intended. That's that word, reflect. So it's not just that it comes down, because you, you know, it's a very important element that you have this shade around it that shines the light down and not out, but it also reflects out and onto all sorts of other surfaces. If you don't have to have warm lighting and not the cool white lighting, unless it's absolutely necessary to have the white lighting, you can use the cooler lights, and there's a science behind it. And our neighborhood at Plantation Bay, they're getting ready to come up with a new lighting plan. We haven't seen the lighting plan, but they promised us as part of the, part of the special exception, that they're going to ensure us that it's going to be dark sky. It's not an arbitrary, there is, we'd like to look it over before it's approved and make sure that in fact it is dark sky compliant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all your work.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Evening.
Hello, Harriet Castle, 14 Treetop Circle. Boy, it can be kind of a long walk getting up here. I wanted to add on to what Mr. Sanford just said. We live right behind the new development that is supposed to be RV boat storage behind us, and it was approved last fall, and there was that exception for dark sky lighting. And we're just really hoping that they really look at all the elements. It's not just, you know, pointing the lights downward. It's if the lights were even necessary in the first place, you know, trying to use a minimum amount of lights, which I really don't think the county has really looked at that at all. I have visited other RV boat storage parks, I mean, places. Some don't even have any lights. There's one being built just two miles from us. They're not having any lighting plan, and there's others that have very minimal. Ours has like, I mean, lots of lights, tremendous amount of light pollution for us, and we had met with the developer before it was voted on, and they told us they were going to do dark sky lighting and implement proper landscaping, and they were going to change those plans before it was voted on. But apparently, they did not, and now none of us technically have to see it before the staff approves it. And I just, you know, would like to have the chance to review it and make sure we're on the same page as far as dark sky, because it impacts our whole entire neighborhood in Treetop, which is in Plantation Bay. You know, it's very important, and it's important for the whole county going forward to really implement it and, you know, look at the specific lighting, the warm lighting, the necessity of the lighting, you know. So, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board, which brings us to consent, and wanted to see if there was any comments or any of the consent items, if anybody had any highlights or anything they wanted to see from consent. Commissioner Pennington, you're good? Okay.
Is this where we pull?
Comments first. You'll have pull in a second.
Okay.
So if there's anything you wanted to comment on.
Nope.
Okay. So at this time, if you have a consent item to pull, go ahead and let me know now.
I'd like to pull 7E and 7H.
I'd like to get 7B, at least an understanding of it.
All right, so an understanding of the appointment?
Mm-hmm, the, the terms and...
Let's see if we can answer that without pulling it. Is there a specific question?
Sorry about that.
For the attorney on, it's, 7B is consideration of an appointment to the value adjustment board. It's a request by the board to appoint David Sullivan to the value adjustment board for a five-year term. What was your question, Commissioner Richardson?
Why is it a five-year term, you know, and why, why is, how is that a...
The value adjustment board is a creature created by the Florida Legislature. And there's a value adjustment board for every county. It is independent and separate from the county commission and independent and separate from the property appraiser. There is a role for the clerk. It organizes when they meet, the positions are identified, and the terms are set all by the legislature.
So why are we voting on it?
So what?
So why do we vote on it?
You have to approve the appointments that represent the county on that board. School board likewise votes for a representative to serve on that board, since the function of that board is to review the property tax bill. Some may claim that the assessment is too high. Some may claim that they're entitled to an exemption that the property appraiser turned down, and so obviously, that decision would affect the revenue that the governments would earn, so they are given those seats.
So it's a five-year term regardless of who's on there?
Right, unless they step down.
Okay.
You know, don't complete the term.
Thank you.
Did you still need that pulled, or is that okay?
If it's considered a statute as the five-year term, then that's not an adjustable situation at this point, correct?
That's correct.
So it's do or die on that one.
Okay. I mean, if you needed to, pulling it would allow you...
I guess we could have a conversation about it. It seems like a very long term to me. I may be wrong, but...
Okay, so we will, we will pull 7B, 7E, and 7H. Is there any other items to be pulled?
Which, I'm sorry, which were the ones?
7B, 7E, 7H, is that correct?
H.
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 Okay, so 7B, we had the explanation from Mr. Hadid, so I'll open it up for conversation, so...
Well, Mr. Chairman, should we approve the, the...
Ah, you're right. Let's go back. Thank you, sir. We're going to move these to the end of, they discussed individually after we do consent.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of 7B, 7E, and 7H.
All right, thank you. There's second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Pennington.
Richardson.
Yeah, you both said it at the same time. I have to pick one.
Take the left ear.
Commissioner Hanson, motion. Commissioner Pennington, second. All those in favor of consent minus the three items signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we will go to 7B, which is the appointment for a five-year term to David Sullivan to the value adjustment board. So again, continue your discussion, Commissioner Richardson.
I've just found it very unusual that somebody who had been serving, serving, serving was continuing to serve in that, in a five-year term. It seemed like a long term to me for someone who's been in service, and I, I'd like to see that people like myself that are in the community step up to doing something that they may have a passion for. It's not, it's not against anybody particularly, but I just would love to see some new faces and some people with some new thoughts, and, you know, I know it's pretty much a standard board, though, correct? There's not much they can say. It's going to come from what the adjustments are, other than listening to the public say their adjustments, correct?
No.
I'd like to make sure I've got the terms on it.
Actually, they're very formalized proceedings in that there is a lawyer that represents the value adjustment board. Evidence is heard before a special magistrate who makes a recommended ruling. Typically, it's expert testimony, you know, the method of valuation or whatever it might be, rules and standards that apply. So it's, it's in a sense a quasi-judicial hearing. But I think that the reason they have the five-year term without respect to whoever might be occupied is it takes a while to understand all those standards. I believe, Mr. Hanson, did you not, you served on the, you served as, as a member...
I still am the chairman.
Oh, okay. I should defer to you, and you can comment on, as you might wish.
Yeah, please.
Well, my question is, do you have a problem, Mr. Sullivan?
No.
Or do you have a problem, well, then, what's the issue?
Well, I'm asking why we're, you know, recycling the same people and...
So you have a problem with Mr. Sullivan?
No.
Well, then, what's the issue?
Another problem with Mr. Sullivan, I have a problem with recycling the same people over and over again. That's all I have a problem with today. That's why I'm questioning it, because I didn't know. It's nothing personal. It's just something that I'd like to see people that are also here and, and, what do you call, I want to say, they come here, they're involved, they have mindsets, and I didn't realize that it was something with background that needed to be done, but I'd like to see growth. When we have all these people, I'd like to see growth. That's all, it's my personal...
How many people, how many people applied for the position?
Only one applicant.
Thank you.
I guess that's an answer then, isn't it? Let's move on.
Okay, I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we can consider, or that we appoint to the value adjustment board, Mr. David Sullivan.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Carney, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. At this point, I'll open up for public comment. If there's anybody that wishes to speak on this item, come up to the podium, state your name. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back and call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We'll move to 7E.
Thank you, Chair. We discussed this item quite lengthy at our workshop before this meeting, and I just wanted to pull it to, to say that this in no way reflects my support or non-support of the five million dollars. I do believe, I do know that it is an appropriation. I do not want in any way to jeopardize the appropriation. However, when reading the actual agreement with the FDOT, I did not feel that the requirements of the county were being met, which resulted in me and the rest of the board receiving a draft ordinance for zoning at the airport. I do feel that this zoning ordinance is very important to our airport. If we grow, as we grow, whatever the situation is, the state is requiring it, and therefore... the state is requiring it, and therefore I'm going to also require it. So we do have a timeline. We do have a plan of action on how we're gonna fix this, and I just want to say thank you for doing the research. Probably could have eliminated a lot of this had I just got the meeting that I asked for instead of going through all this, but this is the result of asking the question. So I did pull it for the sake so that I could vote against it.
Okay, thank you. Did... Did anybody else have any questions for this item? Or did Mr. Seager have any... Anything to add? You don't have to come up if you think... We workshopped it, so if you... If there's any other questions. I guess the point being... The counterpoint being, we received a letter from our contact with the Florida Department of Transportation that stipulated their support of the grant application and the process that the county is going through to adopt the ordinance that's in question, which is being scheduled for a first and second hearing in March. Did I do that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll add to that because that specific email with the FDOT, we told them it would be done by March, so this has to go off without a hitch. Because, I mean, it was supposed to be adopted, you know, I'm gonna complain a little bit. 2016, we've been aware of it again since 2023, and we're just now getting it accomplished, so... And we have Palm Coast now in the mix, but we understand it's not their... They're not gonna hinder us getting it done, but it has to get done in March if we're gonna do this. Because the email with the FDOT lady said we were going to have it done in March. So I don't know that, without knowing the context, you know, she's thinking you're gonna have it done in March, she doesn't have a problem with it, so it's gotta be done in March.
Any other questions on this? All right, any motion? Pardon me? You gonna make me pass the gavel the first time?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve item 7E.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson. I'll need a second? Mr.... I can motion that, second that? Mr. Hadid or not?
Yes, you can, but you need to pass the gavel if you do.
Is there... Okay, so, I don't have that gavel, but I'll pass the gavel to the vice chair, and I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. To call the vote?
Do we call the vote?
Sorry, I couldn't hear Pam.
Did you ask for...
Oh, you wanna go to public comment?
Did you ask for public comment?
Apologies, yes. Let's go ahead and go to public comment on item 7E. Is there any public that wishes to speak on this item?
Darling Shelley, Palm Coast. I hate to see FDOT grant be jeopardized when it could be so much easier for this board to use your authority just to update the rules and regulations of the Flagler Executive Airport to restrict and/or limit the number of touch-and-go maneuvers. Per Mr. Seager, the airport doesn't make any additional funds on the operation number performed at the airport. Whether or not that is true, I'm not sure, but that's what he told me directly. The local residents would be so relieved to have peace and quiet and not a war zone over our neighborhoods, over our schools, over our hospitals, over our businesses. Chemicals don't dissipate less than 3,000 feet in the air. There's no currents, and they settle down to the ground. The sheer volume of these training aircrafts is the problem. And now I feel as a proponent of an executive airport where we have major companies and businesses flying in to Palm Coast and Flagler to actually support the local businesses may be in jeopardy simply because of a hard-headed supervisor refusing to limit a known threat to the safety, health, and welfare of the residents of Flagler County and Palm Coast. It's as simple as amending your rules. You've been told that the FAA will not allow it, and that's not true. The FAA controls airports in the sky. They don't have jurisdiction over our airport. You do. I'm sorry. We need a beautiful terminal in Palm Coast, and it's a shame that we can't come to a resolution. The city of Palm Coast has kicked the can down the road, as has the county, for too long. We need to come together to protect every single resident of Palm Coast and Flagler County and tell the flight schools they can go build their own facility and not fly over densely populated Palm Coast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Are there any one else wishing to address us? No, no, you really, it's okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. I'll bring it back. Do you wanna have discussion before we call the vote again?
I just wanna say one thing. I do also have an email, if we're gonna do emails back and forth, from Sean Moylan stating that this grant in no way will be jeopardized if we hold off until March.
What's a...
Mr. Hadid, is that accurate? Do you know? You don't know?
That would be a different... That would be a different motion, if you wanna table it, but don't...
I think the comment was that he didn't think it would be, but we haven't checked with the granting agencies, and I did just wanna clarify that with regard to the General Aviation Airport, they operate under the regulatory oversight of the FAA, which is why we're not able to restrict the actions that the last speaker had said, so I just wanted to put that out there. It's not something that the county or the city isn't doing, it's just that it doesn't fall under our purview, it's under the purview of FAA, which is the Federal Aviation Administration, so...
And if I... If I may present a fact. The Board of County Commissioners determined that this was gonna be a legislative priority and submitted it to the legislature, asking them to use their legislative power to appropriate these funds, and they have done so. I want you to consider that.
Yeah, I believe, Mr. Hanson, if you would like to pull your motion back, I would like to make a motion to table it so it doesn't... Till they can get it done, so it doesn't kill it, in fact. Kill the entire...
I wanna say one thing. Table it to what?
Hold on a second, one second.
Yeah, 'cause if, as it stands, as that vote looked, it would be essentially killing the grant. So if you'll remove your motion, we, you know, at least get an emotion on the table to save it, so that, you know... Either with a...
I'll remove the second.
I'll remove the motion.
Okay, we've removed the motion now, so doing that, we're gonna start with a new motion, because we...
Well, let's not... Can I...
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So, let's just have a discussion of...
I didn't think so.
Of the intent and then possible ramifications. Mr. Hadid made a really good point about the efforts we've gone to approve this. We've... And just wanna say, again, from the stickler for details, the letter from DOT gives me the comfort to move forward, that DOT, which is the granting agency through which the funds are coming, has written to us that we are in good standing with the process, with the points that you made. Now, I fully expect, you know, other than two readings, which takes a month, that that we can... That we continue to meet that criteria. I personally just think even tabling it is is better than killing it, but it's... I still think the perception of maybe not approving it is not as good as we may want to present after going through all the hard work to get those funds appropriated. Yes, sir.
May I inquire? Is the... Is the predicate, we're not approving it? That we do not have the ordinance in place? If that is the predicate, I wanna remind you that the agreement, within the four corners of the agreement, it imposes on us the obligation to enact an ordinance. I mean, it has already recognized... This is a... We didn't write this, you all know, we're not the authors of this, this is the state. So, they already acknowledge within the agreement that they don't have the ordinance and that we commit to have the ordinance. I don't know that it has a deadline date, but with the email you reference, it seems to me we got a deadline on March 31.
That's right.
On or before March 31, just taking what you said at face value.
As I was trying to say before, my no vote was... My no thought was due to the timeframe, because we've discussed this, and if it started month, you know, long and keeps going on and on and on, was the finite date is March 31. Can that be done?
You mean, is it feasible?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have time to consult with everybody, but...
Me neither.
My world, that's totally feasible. We'll force you to come to some resolution on it.
I'm talking about the timeframe, not... Maybe I'm confused.
To pass the ordinance. To pass an ordinance.
I thought it was to get finished, okay, never mind.
I think you can... I think you can finish March 31. We would certainly... I mean, you guys know the approach.
We set priorities, so if we... If we make that the top priority for the legal department to get done.
During the workshop, we said it was the six... From 2016. Was that not mentioned? Was that not mentioned?
It was due in 2016. We, as a board, made it a consensus to have it in 2023, August of 2023. It is now going forward. You know? But that's...
Welcome to government.
So the confident... Well, you know, tell me about it. That's not the... So, the confidence to get it done by March, you know?
Well, if I could... The delay, it was created in October of '23. It was sent to FDOT for their input, because we didn't want to adopt something and then have them come back and give comments, so we approached them October of '23, asking for input. The central office in Tallahassee, FDOT, on the aviation planning side, is short-staffed, they've had turnover. If you look at their website, they have two vacancies right now. They have a planning administrator and a planning manager, both are vacant. We followed up a year later in October of '24, still have not gotten any feedback. The reason... We don't have to get their approval or their input, that was just something that staff felt was beneficial, so that we're not adopting and having to amend something the following month. Now that we've waited 16 going on 17 months, we're choosing to bring it forward. The March deadline is just what we determined in staff that we could get it done without a delay. We've already advertised, already contacted the newspaper, it's being advertised in January and February for a first and second reading in March. So it is completely doable. It's a self-imposed due date of March, which is what we shared with FDOT's District Five Office. If we called her or emailed her tomorrow and said, hey, there might be a snag, it's gonna be April, do you have a problem? As long as we are making steps to comply, this project that you're accepting the money for, it's gonna take at least a year, year and a half to construct. So I don't think that they're gonna complain about a, you know, two-week delay or a three-week delay.
I think the message is very clear to staff that we're trying to do business differently. I don't know that rejecting the $5 million from the state is the appropriate way to make that point. So, I think through the workshop, we came to a reasonable agreement to complete the ordinance by March, and now, you know, as is our duty, we've imposed that deadline to staff to complete. And I think to our... We can request updates through February at our workshops. We have one meeting in February, but we have two workshops in February to continue to monitor progress.
I just wanna see that the progress happens, and that's my biggest concern, so...
When you look at the ordinance, it talks about public comments, including presentations by the staff, public hearings, the Board of County Commissioner, so it's a tight window, there's no doubt about it. I'm happy with it, I did not expect to get the vote that we got, so we should probably... I do not wanna jeopardize this grant at all. That was not my intent.
Okay. All right, the gavel's been handed back, so at this point, we do need... After a very good discussion, I wanna thank everybody for some very good candid discussion, but we will need a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item 7E, consideration of resolution in public transportation grant agreement with the FDOT.
I'll second it.
All right, I heard Mr. Hanson first.
That left ear?
Mr. Hanson is quick on the motions. I have a motion by Commissioner Pennington and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Mr. Hadid, do we need to go back out, or have we done public comment?
I don't believe you need to go out, you've completed it.
Okay. So with that, we'll call the question in favor of the motion, all signify with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, appreciate that. All right, item 7H.
7H will be very short. In reading through the agenda packet, I did submit a question about funding to Mr. John Brower in our accounting department, and I wanted to thank him for his concise, accurate... I believe it to be accurate, but very concise accounting, providing me with the answers to the question that I asked, and I look forward to working with him and getting updates on the Nexus Center. I did receive some comments from some constituents that they are very eager and waiting for this project. So Heidi, we did talk at the workshop about updates on major projects, and I think we'll be working toward that as we move forward with Nexus. Thank you.
Okay, any other comment? I'll bring this to the public for public comment. Anybody wish to address the commission on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board on 7H.
Make a motion to approve item 7H, consideration to amend the library impact fee fund.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Pennington, seconded by Commissioner Carney. All those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. All right, we'll move on to general business, and A is consideration of planning board development... Planning and Development Board appointments. Thank you. Mr. Magel, is anybody here? And do we give them time?
I don't know if Mr. Long is here. I don't see Mr. Boyd or Mr. Corbett.
It's Mr. Long right there.
Yeah, he said Mr. Long is here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I heard it wrong, too, so...
So you have two appointments, two incumbents that are... Have both applied for reappointment. Mr. Boyd in the area of west US-1 and south of State Road 100, and then Mr. Corbett in the area US-1 and I-95 and south of State Road 100. Mr. Long is also in the same geographical area as Mr. Boyd, and so he has applied for that same seat. You are to choose one between either Mr. Boyd or Mr. Long for that appointment in that geographical area, west of US-1, south of... that geographical area, west of US 1, south of State Road 100. And then for reappointment, Mr. Corbett's seat only he's the only candidate for that one.
Chair, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Um, I guess, and I apologize for not following up this early, is there a we cannot consider Mr. Long for the other seat under Jack Corbett. Is that correct?
I think the the board, I believe the the section in the LDC says that you can have through a supermajority vote, appoint additional at-large members. And so what you would do is you'd just effectively appoint him as a he he can't change where he lives, but you can appoint then an additional at-large member and then just leave that that area geographically vacant effectively.
So to do that, if if I wanted to consider, would I just write him in and see if the board or ask for to change out Mr. Corbett? I guess that's a new one, right?
New new one, we could we could certainly handle that if if there's consensus among the among the board members, you could you could.
And if I didn't want to vote for Mr. Corbett, would I leave it blank? Would be my next question. Or do I have to vote?
I think you leave it blank. You're not compelled to vote.
For the am I compelled to vote in the reappointment of Mr. Corbett? Do I have to vote since there's only one choice?
Only one choice. Well, I think by you you're not forced to vote for someone, so.
But if they get one vote from any five of us, then they automatically get a vote. They get reseeded.
If you had one vote and four abstentions.
Would it put it back out?
It's still a majority, isn't it?
I think.
You have to have a majority to get reappointed?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
If there was one affirmative vote and four abstentions, then that vote would carry.
It would carry? You don't need a majority vote.
In my mind, it would because the others have not opposed.
So so it's not an up or down for the reappointment?
It's not have to be, no.
So I don't know. The answer to your question is?
Do whatever you like. Well.
I think let me go back. You have three candidates. You can choose two. And so if you if you choose to choose two, choose two. If you don't want to choose two, choose one. If you don't want to choose any, choose none. Don't choose three. Please don't choose three. Three is bad.
But a one or a two.
One or a two could work.
Okay.
And I think if you if you did go for two in the same area, then the the vote then on that appointment has to be supermajority. It cannot be three-two. If it's three-two, you have not made the appointment. Clear as mud.
Is there um an opportunity to hear the applicant, or is it too late?
Before he voted.
Yeah. But did you, Mr. Long, did you wish to say anything?
I tried it a couple of times. It should be right at three minutes. But good evening, commissioners. My name is Ron Long. I'm happy and honored to to be here with you speaking. I was born and raised in Jacksonville, Florida. My parents owned rental properties, and as a child, I was often required to accompany my father on maintenance trips. What started out as chores became a foundation for a lifelong interest in construction and in development. After high school, I earned my real estate salesperson license and began a career in real estate. While sales didn't turn out to be my forte, I excelled in maintenance and repairs, which led me to a fulfilling career in construction. I gained experience in residential, commercial, agricultural, historic construction. Highlights include working on public facilities, rehabilitating homes, and contributing to community landmarks like Flagler Playhouse, which I helped build the only part that's still standing. These these projects deepen my appreciation for how thoughtful planning and development can help can help a community's character and quality of life. In 2003, following recommendations from trusted friends, my wife and I moved to Flagler County. Over the past two decades, I have witnessed an incredible growth and evolution in this community. Over the having lived in Palm Coast and now in unincorporated Flagler County, I've come to love the balance of opportunity and charm that is unique to this area. However, we face continued growth, and it is clear that careful planning is essential to ensure Flagler County remains a place where families can grow and thrive. Flagler County has experienced remarkable population growth over the past decade, and the trend is slated to continue. We're looking to see possibly about 40,000 new residents over the next 10 years. In fact, Florida saw nearly a million new residents come to Florida just in 2023. The influx presents both challenges and opportunities. While growth is inevitable, we have to manage how it grows so we can make sure we define our countries or county's future. Certain areas of our county have aimed at maintaining a bedroom community identity, and while this aspiration is admirable, it's no longer sustainable given the rapid growth we're experiencing. We must adopt forward-thinking approach to that balances development with preserving the characters of the community. I bring a fresh perspective to this opportunity. While I acknowledge I do not have the experience on the board as the other appointees, I offer decades of hands-on experience, a deep understanding of community needs, and a dedication to learning and collaboration. My goal is to support balanced development that meets the county's growing needs without overburdening individual homeowners through property taxes. I want to help make Flagler County a hub for both businesses and residential living, a place where families can grow, businesses can thrive, and children can build their futures without having to leave their community. My own children, who grew up here, loved this community, they had to move away to find opportunities for employment. I would like to ensure that future generations don't have to go through that. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to serving on the board, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. I think you were prepared for that.
I am.
Uh, one question. Do you have any problems with the required education component? Okay. And meeting the meeting requirements? Okay. Thank you, sir. It's a carryover from the workshop.
This is going to be a this is going to be a train wreck.
Everyone has been reappointed, appointed. Through your vote, you have reappointed Mr. Boyd and appointed Mr. Long. If or through your action, and then now to accept those, you'll need a supermajority vote in order to make Mr. Long an at-large appointment.
Okay, so we'll need a motion.
To approve both reappointment of Mr. Boyd and then appointment of Mr. Long as an at-large member of the planning.
Separately?
You can do them together.
I'll make a motion that separate. Okay, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Boyd to the Planning and Development Board.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Carney, second by Commissioner Pennington. I'll open it up for public comment.
My name is Dr. Lynn Bravro-Rosewater. I live at 200 Ocean Crest Drive. It was my understanding that the planning board was supposed to have different kinds of expertise on it and some on. It seems to me that right now we have developers, 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 developers. And there used to be balance, and I thought there was a requirement for a balance. And I I don't see anybody discussing that, and I think that's a very important component. Because if you have all people that think development's good, you don't have anyone else to give the questions to what trees are you removing, what is this going to cause? Those questions don't get asked. So that's a point I'm bringing up to you. I I wish somebody would look and see what the actual original requirements are for a balance on the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing them, we'll bring it back to the board, and we'll make a vote on Planning Board Member Mike Boyd for approval. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Second motion will be for Mr. Long.
Make a motion to appoint Mr. Ron Long to the Planning and Development Board.
I still heard the left ear is a little stronger.
When will I prepare?
Have a motion by Commissioner Pennington, second by Commissioner Hanson for approving Mr. Long to the Planning and Development Board. I'll open it up for public comment. All right, seeing none, approach. Well, hold on. Last second hand went up.
So here at Castle, 14 tree-top circle, like Pam Richardson had mentioned earlier about having some new blood in some of these positions, I feel strongly about that. And I very, you know, I support Mr. Long being appointed and look forward to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing them, we'll bring it back to the board. Have a motion by Commissioner Pennington, second by Commissioner Hanson in favor of Mr. Long for the Planning and Development Board. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, thank you. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
And I would, it just seems appropriate. I know Mr. Corbett has been a longtime serving member and would like to just congratulate him for and thank him for his not congratulate, but thank him for his time that he's helped the county on the Planning and Development Board. Okay, we will move on to nine, and this is a public hearing quasi-judicial, hearing the case of eight-year-old Alapaha Blue Blood Bulldog named Duke. And since it's quasi-judicial, I'll need ex disclosure of ex parte communications. Commissioner Hanson?
None.
Commissioner Pennington?
None.
I have none. Commissioner Carney? Commissioner Richardson?
None.
Okay, with that, I'll open it up to Mr. Moylan.
Thank you, Chair. This is a dangerous dog hearing. You have before you a recommended order from the county's hearing officer, who took in the evidence and the arguments of these parties, which I'll explain a little more about, and then made this recommendation to you. And tonight, what you're going to do is hear from the dog owner and the victims or victim. And you'll make a vote to either uphold that recommended order, reject it, or modify it as you see fit. As you consider the case, you have the three prongs that you might begin to be familiar with now that you've heard before. You want to make sure that the parties were got due process, that that the process was fair. You want to make sure that the magistrate's recommendation was supported by competent substantial evidence and that he applied the correct law. And let me jump into that law, then. A dangerous dog under Florida statutes is not what a lot of people think of when they hear the term necessarily. The definition, I'll read it into the record here, dangerous dog means any dog that, according to the records of the appropriate authority, has, when unprovoked, chased or approached a person upon the streets, sidewalks, or any public grounds in a menacing fashion or apparent attitude of attack, provided that such actions are attested to in a sworn statement by one or more persons and dutifully investigated by the appropriate authority. In this situation, you had the the maze. First, we had Mr. May walked his own dog in the Hammock Dunes community, and the neighbor's dog escaped. This is a rather large dog, and it charged at him full speed. It was not leashed. The owner was not present, charged at him full speed and knocked him to the ground and attacked his dog. The dog required some veterinary care and was eventually pulled away. Several weeks later, a very similar incident happened with Mrs. May. Same situation, walking the dog on the street. The neighbor's dog escaped, comes charging full speed, and there again was a an attack, if you will. The attack was mainly on the little the little dog of the maze, who again was injured and taken to the vet. These facts were essentially stipulated to at the hearing. There was no dispute that these incidents occurred. The dog owner, as you will hear from, essentially said that it was not characteristic of her dog, it was an off and an outlier. It's not indicative of the nature of her dog. And as I argued in representing Animal Control, and as the magistrate found, the the general disposition of the dog is not the is not the definition of a dangerous dog, but rather the fact that these attacks occurred. If you uphold the order, what happens is restrictions are put in place. So the dog owner would have to post signs for visitors and children at the entrance of her property. The dog would have to obviously be restrained, properly contained on that property. And if she were to take the dog off the property, it must be muzzled and leashed. In addition, the dog has to be registered with Animal Control and updated annually so that we can keep track of the dog. If they were to move, we need to know where the dog is. These are protections for the public so that such an incident doesn't happen again. If it were to happen again, the dog would be euthanized, and the owner could possibly face criminal charges. That's not the situation now. Rather, this is the first step that puts those protections in place. So with that, the the ordinance here, as the chair alluded to earlier, we don't take public comment in these cases, and that is by this board's own ordinance, and it is consistent with Chapter 286 in the Florida statutes. And the reason for that is, in the past, when we we allowed years ago, we allowed public comment, and everybody loves dogs or has an opinion one way or the other about dogs, and they would come up to the podium and just start talking about dogs and, you know, or or perhaps that breed of dog. I know that breed, and that's not a good breed. You should label them dangerous. But they had no knowledge of the actual incident itself. So it was really irrelevant commentary. And so we don't have public comment. It's we're talking about the rights of a dog owner, and it has to your decision has to be based on the actual incident and the facts. The the persons supporting the recommended order, in this case, the victims, the maze, would have five minutes to address you. So five minutes. The dog owner, the one opposing the recommended order, would get five minutes. And then if the victims wanted, they would have three minutes of rebuttal.
So at this time, we'll bring the maze to the podium.
Yes.
Just come up and state your name to the microphone there. There you go. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Lisa May, 14 via Capri.
We are Kim Bowman's next-door neighbors.
David May, 14 via Capri. So I I just want to make it clear that I was walking on our street, not in front of my house, down the street, and this dog came charging from the yard, full speed, in a menacing nature, and basically jumped on top of me and knocked me to the ground and bit my dog, unprovoked. And you should also know that this same dog, three times, got loose on the street, charged our house. My little dog sits up on the couch at the window. The dog came up to the window and tried to get in the window, three times. Once a while ago, twice, the two weeks before these two incidents occurred.
Just a point, I'm going to cut your time. Is there public comment allowed to bring new testimony in or just talk on the ones that were part of the package?
So this this was testified to at the hearing?
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Continue, and I apologize.
So. So, and then the dog, when he couldn't get through the window on the third time, tried to bang into our door five times, tried to break the door down and come in the house. Yes.
About a week and a half after my husband's attack, I was about halfway up the street when I turned around and saw this dog charging at me, just ferociously. He came up on my back. He's a big enough dog that his paws were up on my shoulders, and he knocked me down, and he proceeded to attack my dog again. He was up in my ear, trying to get to my dog, and ended up biting through his eyelid. This dog is ferocious. I can't even tell you how upsetting this was. And the fact that we've had to go through this to get some results or get some protection for ourselves in the hammock, it is not right. And it was terrifying.
And I would add that, living in Palm Coast, living in Flagler County, we should not have to carry something to protect ourselves on the street. And we have grandchildren that live on the street, visiting neighbors. There are other small dogs. This dog cannot be loose again. And I will tell you that I spoke with Ms. Bowman after the first attack, and I looked her square in the eye, very professionally, and said, this could never happen again. And she said, I know. Well, guess what? Two weeks later, I'm flying in from Texas, and I get a call from my wife, and she's at the vet with our dog.
During that attack, the second attack, there was no assistance from the owner. We, the dog had to be pulled off my shoulders after I had fallen into the street by my neighbor. And he was an ex-police officer, and he was extremely brave to get in there and grab this dog off of me and drag him back to the house. And in my husband's case as well, it was not resolved by the owner. It was resolved by neighbors. And there were eight neighbors out when my eye was attacked. They all came out when they heard all the screaming.
And in closing, I ask you to please agree with what the magistrate decided. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we ask questions or?
You can.
Okay. So I'll open it up to the commission if anybody had any questions for the Mays.
Oh, I, I just had one question. Each time your dog was attacked, it was bitten once or twice, or it looked like once in the eye and then once in the stomach?
It was once, once in the eye, and, and one, the first time, he was bit in the abdomen, and he had a scar, like a thing on his paw.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, and my dog's like this big. And I'm a 240-pound guy. That thing knocked me to the ground.
Okay. All right, no, any other comments? Okay. The owner, the dog owner?
Right here.
Okay, it's your turn to come up.
I have to tell you, I didn't think, my name is Kim Bowman. I didn't think I would have a chance to speak tonight, as I asked, will I have anything to be able to say on the next hearing? And they said, no, we're, we're going to decide it now, and you're just going to show up and they're going to give you a verdict. So I'm kind of surprised how this is all coming to play, because I don't have anything prepared, being that is, we just had this conversation with the Mays. I hope that you guys have reviewed the letters that I provided to you by, by the different people that have spoken on behalf of my dog. I have lived there for 13 years, and he is eight and a half years old. We've never really had any kind of issue with this, and I'm not going to add any more information to this. But as I stated before, I do take full responsibility for my dog and my dogs. One just passed away from cancer. The reason my dog got out, I know I have to take responsibility, and the Mays do know this. I've been taking care of my brother who has advanced dementia, which I'm sure you know about. And he was trying to take out his incontinent wear to the trash can, because I, I was getting very tired of always picking up after the, him on that. That's how the dog got out. That's why immediately I didn't know. As soon as I saw what happened the first time, I'm, I've, I've talked to David about this. I don't want to have bad neighborly problems, but he had his dog up like this in the air. And my dog kept going back and forth and back and forth, and I'm going like this, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, trying to, try to get him. So I did get him, and he, I took him home. I just saw that they talked about being charged at. I didn't see him charging. He likes Winston. He wants to go over there. Winston's been on my property as well. There hasn't been an, an issue until this, this particular first time. As far as the second time, yes, he did get out. I did not know it again at the time. And it wasn't an ex-police officer. Actually, it was a PE teacher that I've known for 13 years that said, come on, Kim, let's go. Because I was so in disbelief. I'd run up there. And we both grabbed, we had no collar on, so he was in for the night. And we both grabbed by the scruff of his neck, and he helped me take my dog home. There was, the dog wasn't biting me or biting my other neighbor. He, he was just, he looked very confused about what happened. I don't know if you know this, but the Mays probably told you that immediately after these incidents happened, I, I apologized. I had a check there. The dog needed antibiotics, and it was fed to an emergency vet the first time, because the veterinarian offices were already closed. So that, that was a pretty pricey bill, but it only needed some antibiotics. The second time, David told me, I did not realize this until the last hearing, that I knew he hit him right above the eye. I didn't hear about the eyelid. I, I thought the scar was right here. And he was worried it, it didn't stop bleeding. So that's what he told me. Again, the dog was treated with antibiotics. Again, I paid for the dog's hospitalization. I mean, I, I don't know, I also couldn't really tell you, except he hasn't had an issue being in Hammock Dunes for the eight and a half years. We've done the 5K walk around all the other dogs and owners there. Of course, he's leashed. I think this being off the leash was probably just something that he's not accustomed to, because he's always on a leash. He's been on a leash since he was eight weeks old, since I've had him, doing training, and he's always on a leash. So I was told by Animal Control, who came and visited, she thought he was a lovely dog, and he is a lovely dog. And she said, well, I, I'd looked up all the statutes. I got the A out, chat GPT out. I looked at all the statutes in Florida, so I was prepared for them to eventually come. Apparently, she missed me the first time. I wasn't there. But she came back another time, totally unaware. I didn't know who she was. Dog came up with toys, came and greeted her. We sat down, we talked. She told me what the definition of a dangerous dog is. I said, I understand that. She asked, she asked me, well, what do you want to do? And I said, well, I do want to appeal the dangerous dog, because it's probably prevent me from taking him, maybe perhaps to a kennel, or which he's been before, and out of state, out of the country. That's one of my main reasons. For now, what I've done is my brother is now in assisted living. He's no longer a threat to the, the environment that I have in my own house. So that will not be a problem of him escaping. I also have put up the, the sign. I have bungee cords on the gate, just added stuff. Talked to the landscapers. They understand that when they leave, they've got to put up the bungee cords again. So I've already followed the dangerous dog policies. He isn't a muzzle when I take him out. The Mays have been at their other home, and I, I know the neighbors have probably said, oh, you know, that's great. So, I mean, I don't want anyone to be afraid of him. He gets cookies. I, I do a walk every day with him. People give him cookies. It's hard to get to the muzzle. But, you know, I just said, you know, we had an incident. They go, well, he's great. So I hope, but, you know, they understand he's a great dog. We're not going to have this happen again. And unfortunately, I can't change what's happened, but I can only make it better in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Moylan, is there rebuttal time? Do I ask the Mays then to come back up?
If they have that opportunity, if they'd like.
Did you have any further comments?
Commissioners, under normal circumstances, I would have expected, after two attacks on your neighbors, that you would have done anything in your power to stop that from happening again. But all she has done is come up against us and work against us and appeal. And it is, it's absolutely unbelievable in the hammock that we should be having to think about getting a weapon and protecting ourselves as we walk up our very small street. So I leave you with that. This has gotten way out of control, and it should have never happened. We, we placed our complaint for the first attack with Animal Services. Animal Services has been here tonight, sitting here with us for three hours or two hours. So thank you for that. But I don't think this should have gone this far. Under normal circumstances, this should have been handled in the neighborhood. And she should have been more than willing to make the sacrifices to protect us from this dog.
Thank you. I failed to ask if anybody had questions for the owner. So is there any questions for the owner? Okay. All right. So we've heard from everybody. Based on the rules, that's, that's, that's all. Yes, ma'am. So at this point, deliberation here and a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So was there any comments from anybody? Or does anybody have a motion? Yes, ma'am? Correct. In, in the, in the documents, right?
I just have a point of clarification from Mr. Moylan.
Go ahead.
In the statute of dangerous dog, this dog rises to the level under, is it B, that it severely injured a domestic animal while off the property more than once? Or is it C, has, when unprovoked chased or approached a person on the street? Is it based on C?
C.
Not B, right? Okay. So we're making the determination because of the sworn statements that he has unprovoked chased or approached a person upon the streets, sidewalks, or any public grounds in a menacing fashion or apparent attitude of attack?
Yes, Commissioner.
And, and we have sworn statement from the Mays?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Any other questions, Mr. Moylan, or for?
I didn't see it, but did Animal Control get more than a sworn statement from, there was other witnesses in the Mays testimony or statement. Did Animal Control interview those, those folks that helped and assisted?
I don't think so. I think she spoke to who you heard from this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we uphold the ruling of the magistrate.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson to uphold the ruling. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Carney. Commissioner Richardson, you had a question?
I just didn't know if the Animal Control Officer was, was, if it was apropos for her to speak at all or not prior to our motion.
No.
It was just under the magistrate's.
Yes, the, under our ordinance, the, the magistrate gathers all the evidence. Here's the testimony, because it can go on for some time. And, and then you get that recommendation. So your review in this item, just like the next one, it's rather narrow. You're looking at the record and the, the arguments that you hear tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. So one final check to see if there's any other questions. Have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney to uphold the magistrate's ruling. Hearing no other comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, on to 9B. Again, quasi judicial, Project 2024-100013, request for an appeal of the Planning and Development Board's decision approving a modification to an approved special exception for an overflow parking lot in the RC Residential Limited Commercial District at 93 and 95 Sanchez Avenue. At this time, I'll ask if there's any ex parte communications. Commissioner Hanson?
None recently, but quite a while ago, when they were thinking about, the, the restaurant was thinking about doing this, they told me about it. Just told me the plan.
But this would be in the mean, between the time period of the planning board and now?
No.
I'm asking Mr. Mingle if that's the time period for ex parte.
Yes, I'd say for the appeal, that would be correct, because, yes, from the time of the planning board to, to tonight's date.
Okay.
So, no.
Commissioner Pennington?
Yes, I've spoken to property owners, specific to how I intended to use property as a solution for parking.
Okay.
I've also have emails from residents that are on file.
I have none. Commissioner Carney?
I have no communications.
Commissioner Richardson?
I have to take that back. I'm sorry. I requested some information from Mr. Dennis Clark as a result of reading the packet. And I did, I did get some information that I requested from him.
So you'll need to be specific about the information?
I wanted to understand the Hammock Community Association's safety concerns, and I received a copy of a communication that was brought forward, I believe, at the September hearing. And that's all.
Okay.
Is that good enough?
Yes. They just need to know, the, the opposing view needs to have a clear idea of what was, what was discussed or given. Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson?
I think I received emails that I didn't open, to be honest with you. And I haven't made any decisions. I will decide my decision as of what's presented to me this evening.
All emails? I didn't get any emails, but they would have, the ones that you caught would have been part of the public record?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Floor is yours.
Got a PowerPoint here, hopefully. Yep.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. If I could, before Adam begins, just to set the stage here, not only for you, but for the members of the public, that, what your role is here tonight, it doesn't hurt to hear it again. Usually, when you get decisions from the planning board, they come to you as a recommendation, and then you're deciding whether to take that recommendation or reject it. In this case, you're sitting in an appellate capacity, like in appellate court, looking down at a trial court's record. So you're, you're basing your decision on the record that was created before the planning board, and there won't be any new evidence. There will be public comment, but there won't be any new evidence. You are making sure that the planning board's decision was supported by evidence. You're not, you are not to reweigh that evidence. You are not to say, well, if I sat on the planning board, I would have decided differently. You're supposed to look at the record and say, well, did they have any evidence in front of them that would allow a reasonable person to make that conclusion? And then, of course, you also are making sure that there was due process and that they followed the correct law. So I just wanted to make that clear for you and also the public.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Got the project location, the four parcels that are part of this request shown in yellow. These slides were presented at the September Planning Board meeting. And so these are, are along North Ocean Shore, south of 17th Road. At the very top is the Bronx House parcel. So these are separated from the Bronx House parcel by the, I think now it's currently Bramlets, I think is what's in there now, commercial operation that's on the corner of 17th and North Ocean Shore. Bartletts, sorry. Bigs use low intensities or future land use for the area. You have that C2 zoning for the Bartlett parcel. And then the remainder of the frontage is RC Residential Limited Commercial Use. Flood zone, always show this to you, just so we're looking at what we're potentially having as far as flood risks. This is part of X shaded, not part of a special flood hazard area. Yes, sir.
I hate to interrupt you. I hate to interrupt you. We are having technical difficulties on this end.
You don't have anything?
So we would have to pause, we would have to take a brief five-minute break.
We can do that.
To correct the monitor situation and. Yes, Leanne, they do, but we don't. So if you, if we could, if there's not any objections, we will take a quick, a five-minute break here in the middle of the proceedings. Don't go mingle, don't do anything.
That's what I was, I was going to ask him. The dog, the dog.
All right, here we go. We will reconvene the county commission meeting. We are in the middle of item 9B. I think the last thing I heard was soils map.
Got soils showing here. Coco complex, bimoney, nothing depressional, no wetlands on the property. And so then this was the plan that was submitted. I think this stayed the same. There was a fence around the rear perimeter landscaping that was shown. This is the extent of the submittal made to the planning board. And so this was within their packet. This is what was presented to the planning board at their meeting. Well, details on the property, 20,000 square foot, more or less for the dimensions, the size of the property. You have those four lots in block two. And this modifies the previous special exception order for the Bronx House Pizza Restaurant itself, serves as overflow valet parking for the guests of Bronx House only. Parking lot is not a prohibited use in scenic A1A overlay district. And the buffers are provided consistent with the LDC requirements and the overlay. Scenic A1A Pride Review stated, "Traffic flow will create a real safety issue. Standalone parking lot is not a permitted use." That's original emphasis from their review. This was at a bad precedent for the scenic corridor overlay. This was presented to the planning board also. Then after the hearing, as a result of the public testimony, the evidence that was presented, planning board put together its findings for each of the nine guidelines into its order. That order dated October 7th, recorded on October 8th. Official records book 2905, page 1983, Public Records of Flagler County, Florida, and included within your packet. So as Sean had mentioned, yes, sir.
Go back. Parking lot is not a prohibited scenic, and scenic says it is not a permitted use. So, and then contradictory there, so.
I'm not going to speak for scenic A1A Pride.
No.
I can tell you what LDC says.
The rules are, it is permitted.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please? Slowly, slowly.
Parking lot is not a prohibited use in scenic A1A corridor overlay district.
Is not. Okay.
Is it addressed?
It's not addressed. But then you, you do look, if you look at the scenic A1A Pride, scenic A1A overlay district requirements, they are heavily geared towards buffering, parking areas. And so if anything, I'd conclude that parking was contemplated as part of the overlay. If you look at it, one of the obvious things is the 40-foot buffer that's there. And so that's present in the Land Development Code now. So the instructions you've had, and you've seen this slide before, and so that you must make three determinations, whether the planning board decision was supported by competent substantial evidence, step number one. Number two, the due process was accorded. Number three, whether the essential requirements of law, nine criteria for special exceptions with the LDC have been observed. You may only take one of the three actions, affirm the Planning and Development Board's decision, remand the matter for further proceedings, or overturn the decision. And so those options prove the appeal request overturning the Planning and Development Board's approval of the modifications of the special exception. And then the result of this is that Planning and Development Board returns, the property's returned status quo before the special exception. So these parcels, all four of them, may be used for any permitted use within the RC zoning district. A little weird with this, approval of the appeal overturns the special exception. Denying the appeal keeps the special exception intact, allows the modification to remain for the overflow parking. Effectively, you're affirming the Planning and Development Board's decision to grant the special exception, so these parcels may be used as the overflow parking lot. Option three, remanding it back to the Planning and Development Board. That's where you're saying the findings have not been appropriately addressed, that basis of the decision, not competent substantial evidence, accorded due process was not provided, or the, we didn't observe the essential requirements of law. And so then the enforcement of special exceptions held into abeyance until the Planning and Development Board renders a decision on the special exception as remanded. Final option, continue this to a time and date certain. And as we noted before, unlike a rezoning request, this is not time barred. Someone could reapply for essentially the same special exception tomorrow if there was a denial or some adverse action. Rezoning has a six-month clock, special exceptions do not. With that, I'll close. Wait any questions or comments from the board?
Questions for Mr. Mingle?
Can you go over one slowly and then two slowly, so I can understand? You spoke quite quickly, so.
Sorry about that. I think I was out of breath. Option one is to approve the appeal. And so the pending application you have is an appeal of the Planning and Development Board's decision on the special exception, approving the special exception. And so the request that you have pending is an appeal of that decision. And what you would do under option one is approve that appeal. When you approve the appeal, you are in effect overturning that decision of the Planning and Development Board. And at that point, the property basically reverts as if the special exception was never granted. Property can be used for any of the permitted uses in the RC zoning district. Option two would have you denying the appeal request. That would keep the special exception in effect, all of its conditions, everything that's there as part of the record. Two would be yes to follow what the planning board did? Correct.
I'm sorry, Adam, may I ask?
Yes.
You just mentioned that the nine criteria are in our packet. You don't happen to know what page in our packet it is, do you?
I do not, but they, they are in the order. If you look at the order, I think it's the second attachment, third attachment after the technical staff report, third attachment after the technical staff report. I think the, the, the appellants may have put it in there, but I think our, our orders, maybe it is in there twice.
It's in there twice? I only need one copy.
What you'll see in, in that, if you're looking at the, the latest one, not the original, it'll have each of the nine criteria. And then at each of the nine criteria below, it will say specific for the restaurant, findings for, for guideline number one regarding parking. And then for the, specific for the parking lot, you'll see a separate section.
Can you remember it's attachment four? It's right at the very last, very last attachment.
So that must be page 343.
408.
434. 408?
Yep. 407.
Mr. Mingle?
Yes, ma'am.
Of the nine, three, four, six, seven, and eight are not applicable. Does that sound about right?
That sounds about right, because of being a.
Because they don't apply, because we're not building something, we're not having signage, we're not having a lighting that we are aware of. Okay.
At least specific to the overflow parking lot.
Height, height is not an issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
So I just want to go through that. So there's no refuse in service areas, because.
Correct.
Valid, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's three. Number four, there's no utility services, so that number four is not applicable.
Yes, ma'am.
Number six talks about signs and exterior linings. He's not going to have signage.
That is, that is correct.
And there's no discussion about lighting, although they're out there at night. What is the intention for them? Maybe they could.
I think they came back, we'll see if they have a different answer now, but I think they had said no, that they did not intend to light it, because it, when it's in operation as a valet, the valet will be present on the site.
And then number seven, required yards and open spaces provided, it's basically going to remain a natural state, vegetative state, right? So seven is not really.
They did show the buffering and the landscape.
I saw that, like a 40-foot on the A1A.
Forty-one on the front and then around the perimeter.
Fifteen on the residential, okay. And a privacy fence in the back. Okay. And then number eight, height, height is not applicable. So three, four, six, seven, eight, not applicable, which leaves us at one, two, five, and nine.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
That's a lot, okay. One, two, five, and nine. Can, I don't know if it's possible, Mr. Jans, could we go through one, two, five, and nine?
Absolutely.
Really quickly, okay. Number one, ingress to and egress from the property shall provide for automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience, shall not unduly interfere with traffic flow and control, and shall provide access in case of fire or catastrophe. And I think, let me just pull up one of the complaints. I think Mr. Crow had stated, you know, he had an issue with the ingress and egress. So describe to me how we believe that's solutioned through the special exception approval.
The, the quick answer I can provide to you is the ingress egress will be permitted by a Florida Department of Transportation. And so we don't have independent authority to provide a driveway permit, approve a driveway permit on to A1A. And so that's point number one. Number two, the technical review committee did review this. It has a single access point. I think it's intended to be gated. It is well off of the pavement edge, so that would provide enough room for queuing, is what we had described. And so the technical review committee collectively believed that the site plan and the request met the requirements.
Can I ask, what would happen if, what would happen if FDOT doesn't give the driveway permit?
And I, I believe they have, but if, if they didn't, then there may be an appeal process through DOT. Otherwise, there would be no access off of A1A.
Do we know if they're requesting that they turn right only, or? I know that was a concern, that they would make them do it right only, then there could be possibility of traffic in the neighborhoods to. in the neighborhoods to do the U-turn. Do we know that?
Yeah, I don't know why the right turn only was, was something that was described, that I, it's not the corner parcel, it's a parcel one in from that, so that I don't understand that. We haven't provided that or required that of any other use that I know of. That'd be a DOT requirement for them on their own, and my take on it is the utilization of the driveway would not, would not require that.
Yeah, I was looking down the street, and there's a lot of, right, driver's choice, right or left turn.
It is.
Mr. Chair, could I just chime in there?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Carney, your question, the planning board's approval of this was contingent upon getting that permit from FDOT. And so, if they did not get it, the approval is annulity.
Yeah, but we don't know that. Are they going to come and call Adam and say, "Hey, Adam, guess what? I didn't get my approval." I mean, is there a open system there that we need to close up? I mean, if they have it, they can send it to us, I guess.
My understanding is they were waiting for this appeal to resolve before they went to get that permit.
Well, Adam just said they got it. So, which is it?
I don't know if they do or not. We did not check into that. We do not verify that. I don't know. I do not know. I hear someone else behind me saying, "You just said that." I don't know. I do not know.
All right, so that's number one. It's subject to the FDOT, or the FDOT would issue-
They would. You either have to drive or you don't.
Okay. And that would be this, and I'm just trying to understand, that would be the same for anything that's placed on this property, because it's a limited commercial, so-
Or residential use.
Or residential, so whoever developed the property would go through the same.
Correct.
Okay. And then, number two, off-street parking and loading areas shall be provided as required, shall take into account relevant factors in subsection one, and shall be located as to minimize economic noise, glare, or odor on adjacent nearby properties. So, the board took into consideration, number two, that piece by, by what, let's see, do we have an analysis from the staff on that? It, we just, it was proposed in a manner, is that what you said, which minimizes impacts as an overflow lot? The lot is proposed to be left in a pervious condition, reducing the hardscapes. So, so it looks like the staff had an analysis of number two, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, number five, and I'm sorry, I'm going through it so everyone else, is screening and buffering, but we said there's a 6-foot privacy fence for the back, a 40-foot buffer on A1A, and a 15-foot on the residential side. So, that takes care of number, or it shows that there was consideration of number five. And then, I guess finally is number nine, the economic effect of the proposed use on adjacent nearby property shall be positive. And when I see that, I think that, well, this is probably the least intense use of a RC. Period. So, that must be, I have, you know, I, I'm going through this, and I'm thinking, that is the most least impact you could do on a commercial out there, is a sometime valet lot.
I'm hesitant to agree, because I don't think-
I know, I'm just asking, I'm trying to think, is that how the board-
I don't think the planning board made that finding. I don't, I don't think they discussed that.
You don't think they discussed?
No. That it was the least impactful.
Did they discuss number nine?
They did.
Okay. And so, they, they took into consideration of the economic effect on it?
As I recall, yes.
Okay. All right, so those are the nine. And then, I had a question about due process. Neighbors within 300 feet were notified. There was a question that if it's a modification of a special exception, would that have changed the notification parameters?
I think the, the change here was specific to the, to the valet parcel, so that the notification was done off of the four lots with a valet, so that I, I think we're still on our side as far as the mail notification. We appropriately noticed the parcels that were the subject to the, to the special exception modification, but it also posts the property.
Okay. I'm done for now.
Okay. Very good.
Question?
Yes.
Question?
Yes, absolutely.
I drove by, Adam, I didn't see a 40-foot buffer. Is that a future planned buffer? There were no trees there. There was a berm and some cactus plant.
There's, there's one-
Some young plants.
I don't want to misquote it, since my gallery's going to be screaming, but there is a, I think there's existing live oak to be preserved, you see?
Yeah.
Okay.
I see a lot of transplanting that's supposed to be, or moving. I did see the berm. Does that qualify? It's only two feet high.
Remember also that we are under an appeal, and so, that appeal stayed in the action. There was actually a complaint we received while, I think, the fence was underway from someone in the neighborhood that said that, "Why is that occurring?" Because the appeal has been filed, so.
So, they may have stopped?
They should have stopped.
So, so the 40-foot, what my other question was? Go ahead, Chair, I'll-
Okay. Any other question? Commissioner Richardson, are you okay?
Any questions? I don't have any at this time. I will wait until we hear the rest of the comments. We'll bring the applicant at this time.
I think, Mr. Moyle, typically it's the appellant, correct?
Appellant, okay.
I have, just, it's a, it's kind of a guided presentation, so I will just give you some visuals.
Say your name for the record, please.
Sorry, Leah Groom, 98 Sanchez. And I appreciate Mr. and Ms. Pennington kind of addressing quite a few of the things in my presentation, so it might be repeated. All right. Oh, and I change it with this? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Leah Groom. I live at 98 Sanchez Avenue in the Hammock. I am a government teacher at FPC, and I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and many of my neighbors who have been deeply impacted by the operations of Bronx Pizza since it moved into our community. We are frustrated, exhausted, and quite frankly, fed up with the ongoing disregard for our neighborhood, our rights as residents, and the lack of enforcement that has allowed this situation to spiral out of control. From the very beginning, the introduction of this business has been nothing short of disruptive. We've been subjected to noise violations that is, that have disturbed our peace at all hours. And although there have only been two events since the Beer Garden closed in June, they still violated the noise ordinances, were disruptive, and still no special event permit was applied for. The lack of accountability is glaring, and it's becoming increasingly clear that the business's operations are not in line with what is fair or respectful to the people who call this neighborhood home. Parking is a persistent issue. The influx of cars from Bronx Pizza's customers and employees has created a nightmare for local residents trying to park on their own streets. And to solve the problem they created, they have applied for a parking lot without the proper process or consideration for the neighborhood, and is yet another example of their blatant disregard for both local regulations and the people who live here. It is clear that this business is operating as if the rules don't apply to them, and the frustration this has caused is noticeable among everyone who lives nearby. Interestingly, if Bronx Pizza were to forego their plans for a beer garden and their extended outdoor seating, and follow their permitted seating plan, they would have enough room within their existing parking lot to accommodate all of their customers' and employees' cars. Many of the ongoing parking issues have to do with their employees and delivery drivers parking on 17th Road. This would resolve much of the parking issue without causing further strain on the surrounding community. However, it seems their focus is more on maximizing profits than on being considerate. I understand that when making your decision, the Board of County Commissioners must determine whether the planning and development board's decision was supported by competent substantial evidence in this case. Therefore, I would like to highlight several points that directly impact the integrity of the proposal. First, according to section 303.13, a standalone parking lot is not listed as an approved use within the zoning regulations of the residential commercial district. In fact, standalone parking lots are explicitly prohibited. This raises immediate concerns about the compliance of the project with the existing zoning laws and whether it meets the regulatory framework designed to ensure orderly development. Additionally, the legal strategy used to avoid the requirement for contiguous, contiguous parcels further complicates matters. This tactic could be seen as an attempt to circumvent zoning regulations, undermining the system that is in place to protect the community's interest. Furthermore, the covenant document associated with this modification was not made available for review during the public hearing. This lack of transparency prevents the community and decision-makers from fully understanding the terms of the proposal, which only further diminishes the fairness and credibility of the decision-making process. The second area for the commission to review is whether due process was accorded. I'd like to draw your attention to several due process violations. First, there was inadequate notification. The notification process for this modification was insufficient. Only neighbors within a 300-foot radius from the parking lot were informed, not all those from the original special exception address. Since this was a modification of that special exception, all affected residents, particularly those who may experience the impact of this project, should have been notified to ensure their voices were heard. Secondly, and one I find quite problematic, was the improper removal of a stop-work order. The stop-work order that had been imposed on the parking lot project was removed twice without following proper procedures. The removal of this order by an appointed official of the Planning and Zoning Board bypassed standard protocols and demonstrated a disregard for established regulations, further eroding confidence. The issues of due process violations was further compounded by unprofessional conduct during the September 10th Planning and Zoning Meeting, where that same member of the Planning and Development Board, who is also the property owner, engaged in inappropriate behavior. Specifically, he discredited a concerned citizen who spoke out against the proposal. This conduct not only reflects a lack of professionalism, but also undermines the fairness and transparency of the proceedings. Finally, the approval of a permit for a vinyl fence on September 24th while the appeal process was still active directly violates section 30703, which mandates an automatic stay until the appeal time is passed. This premature approval undermines the regulations designed to ensure that modifications are properly reviewed before being implemented. Such conduct raises significant concerns about the impartiality of the board and the integrity of the decision-making process. A fair hearing requires respect for all opinions, especially those critical of the proposal. The fact that the board member, as both a decision-maker and a property owner with a vested interest, chose to publicly dismiss concerns casts doubts on the board's commitment to unbiased deliberation. And although Mr. Goodman recused himself from voting on the matter, his comments and behavior during the hearing may have influenced the opinions of other board members. The influence of board members' remarks, especially from someone with a direct stake in the outcome, can easily sway the decision-making process, even if they technically didn't participate in the vote. In light of all this, it is essential to question whether the board's decision was truly made in good faith and accordance with the principles of transparency and fairness, which are vital to maintaining due process. These violations highlight a pattern of procedural shortcomings, lack of transparency, and disregard for community input, all of which, again, call into question the fairness and integrity of the decision-making process. Finally, the commission must weigh whether the essential requirements of law, specifically the nine criteria for special exception within the LDC, have been observed. There are several areas of concern. First, the ingress and egress, automotive and pedestrian safety. One of the key criteria requires that the ingress and egress to the property provide automotive and pedestrian safety. The proposal has not adequately addressed the safety concerns associated with the additional traffic and potential hazard caused by increased vehicles on local roads, especially given A1A's 50 mile per hour speed limit. The lack of this comprehensive traffic study further heightens these concerns. And please, don't disregard the fact that there will be increased traffic on residential Sanchez Avenue. Number two, minimizing traffic and disruption on adjacent properties. The LDC also requires that off-street parking and loading areas take into account relevant factors to minimize economic noise, glare, or odor effects on adjacent and nearby properties. The project, the project's failure to provide a clear plan to minimize, regulate, or monitor parking on 17th Road and Sanchez is a significant concern. The proposal is likely to intensify existing congestion and parking issues, leading to a reduction in the quality of life for residents. Number three, the economic impact on adjacent properties. The LDC further stipulates that the economic effect of the proposed use on an adjacent and nearby properties must be positive. In this place, in this case, it is unclear how a prohibited use, such as a standalone parking lot, would have a positive economic impact on surrounding properties. The project's potential to reduce property value due to increased traffic, noise, and parking issues has not been adequately addressed, nor has the applicant provided sufficient evidence or data to demonstrate that this proposal will increase property values in the area. Without concrete evidence supporting this claim, it is difficult to see how this modification meets the economic criteria outlined in the LDC. In light of these concerns, it's clear that the proposal fails to meet several of the essential requirements of law, as outlined in the LDC. What has been even more troubling is the behavior of the business owners themselves. There's a noticeable lack of respect for the community, the residents, and our concerns. Their actions show that they're more interested in expanding their profits than in fostering a relationship with the people whose neighborhoods they are now a part of. There has been no effort to collaborate, no effort to address our concerns in good faith, and when issues arrive, there's no accountability from them, just a continued pattern of ignoring the rules, whether it's related to noise, parking, or business operations. The situation has now reached a breaking point. As residents, we have tried to be patient, we have voiced our concerns, sought resolutions, called the non-emergency number countless times, and even tried to engage the business owners in dialogue. But when our efforts were ignored, we were left with no choice but to take action and appeal the illegal parking lot. We're forced to take these steps, because at every turn, it has become clear that without our intervention, this business will continue to operate, operate with impunity, acting as though it's above the law. A clear example of this disregard for community and legal processes occurred after the Planning and Zoning Meeting on September 10th. During the meeting, speakers were harassed from the owners while at the podium speaking. In fact, some of them won't speak tonight because of this. And when the meeting ended, well after 10:00 PM, Bynell Police were called to the parking lot right outside, following a report that an individual was being harassed by the owners of Bronx House Pizza. The notes further indicated, after winning the case, the business owners started yelling at everyone and engaged in a verbal disturbance. It's really unfortunate that they are not doing what they say. They say they want to better the community and solve the parking issue, but this, but if this is for the community, how is a parking lot helping anyone but them? This is why, as residents, we're compelled to take further action. If we do not stand up and demand compliance, this business will continue to act as though it has, is exempt from the law and public accountability. And now, we turn to you, County Commissioners. It's up to you to say no. No, we will not allow businesses to bypass the rules. No, we will not allow them to operate outside of your codes and regulations. No, we will not tolerate a culture where businesses can ignore the land development code and create chaos for residents who simply want to live in peace. We ask for your support in standing with us and enforcing codes that are meant to protect our community. We ask that you hold Bronx Pizza accountable for their violations, and that you send a clear message that businesses must respect the neighborhoods they operate in. We deserve better. Our neighborhoods deserve better. Thank you for your time and your consideration. We trust you will make the right decision and approve the appeal to overturn the Planning and Development Board's approval of the modification to the special exception for the overflow parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you for the presentation. Mr. Livingston? I won't say it.
It's Dr. Livingston.
Doctor.
Good evening. Jay Livingston here on behalf of the landowner, A1A 5384 LLC. They own the land that the Bronx House and the parking lot is located on. Just a couple of, first of all, I do believe in that presentation, certain things that were not presented to the planning board were put into the record. For example, what happened after the planning board certainly couldn't have occurred within the planning board, and I think that the rules that Mr. Marlin laid out earlier were very clear about, this is a review of the record. Due process does require that you don't go outside of the rules of your appellate review. It also, it would require, you know, some factual findings, not just not an anecdote about what they recall happening. So I would caution you on allowing that to prejudice my client. That would be a true violation of due process, for you to have your decision prejudiced by those statements that were not part of the planning board's record. And on that point, due process, as far as notices required, no changes, we were very clear in our application that no changes to the restaurant were proposed. No seating, we weren't enlarging the seating area. We were attempting to address a problem that was actually very well shown in the pictures by the appellant, that there was parking within right-of-ways on A1A, along Sanchez. We were trying to find a way to draw cars away from that and put them in a safer place, out of view, off of right-of-ways. And that was the whole point of my clients going out and purchasing this piece of land for $440,000 in order to alleviate this problem. You talk about the greed and the profit of my clients, it's going to take a while to recover the money that they did in order to provide this benefit to the community and address the problem that arises. As far as the seating requirements are concerned and any violations, again, to the due process argument, there are no active code violations related to seating that I'm aware of, and I believe today, in an email to Ms. Carney, Mr. Mangle was very specific that, and I quote in the email that he sent her today, "We have done several seating counts based on regular complaints from the HCA and A1A Senate Pride Committee members, and Bronx House continues to meet its minimum off-street parking requirements." So, everybody's entitled to their opinion. That's the beauty of our society. But Adam Mangle, as the Planning and Zoning Director, is actually empowered by your code to be the interpreter of your code and apply it. And he made that determination, that's what you have to base your decision on tonight, because you can't base it upon allegations of code violations that have not been founded. There's a process there, and those don't exist. So you can't, that needs to be out of your mind when you make your decision. As far as unprofessional conduct, I'll never defend unprofessional conduct, but you could imagine the frustration that one would have going out.
Okay, all right. No outbursts from the back, please. Nothing.
You can imagine.
It prejudices this hearing, and you hurt your own cause by doing that. It can't happen, I'm sorry, but we have processes in place.
I won't defend unprofessional conduct, and I wish that it hadn't happened, but the frustration did bubble up because of the efforts, the extensive efforts we've gone into in trying to address this problem. And then, the community members that we were attempting to hopefully, you know, make them feel better about the situation by removing cars from the right-of-way, suddenly we're unhappy with the solution that we came up with. So, I'm not going to defend the conduct, but that's the reason why, the frustration bubbled over. It's irrelevant to your questions, to the questions tonight.
Now you have to stick to the facts of the case, too.
Yes, that's exactly right. I'm just going through their appeal. This is sticking to their, I'm going, there's nine elements to their appeal, and I'm reading them off as they were titled in their appeal. So, sticking to the facts of what's for the record brought by the appellant. Improper removal of the stop-work order, I can't speak to that. To one of your earlier questions, not to get too out of order, it's my understanding, and if Mr. Mangle needs to jump in, please, please correct me, but just like with the Bronx House original special exception, the order that created the restaurant use on the other parcel, the special exception is just the approval of the use. The next step would then be a site plan. And that's when we would go to DOT. So we would go to DOT to get our right-of-way utilization permit. We would get the details of that, and then we would finalize our site plan. In this case, there's not much to do internally than what you have already seen, because we're trying to maintain the natural integrity of the lot as best we can. In furtherance of the A1A guidelines, that's how the application was designed, but that would be the next step, and then we would go in and get our permit. So any action that was taken prior to that is unfortunate, but it's ceased, and it wouldn't continue until those procedures were followed. As far as why action was taken prior to the appeal being filed or the automatic stay, it's important for everybody to realize, we were not made informed about the appeal until November 21, 2024. That's when I was transmitted a copy of it as the applicant. Long after all this had happened, we had no idea that an appeal was filed. In fact, the county recorded the development order, which is now a title matter on my client's title, as if it's been approved, which is a defect if it hasn't been approved, it now has to be remedied. So, any action that was taken was taken in good faith, because we didn't know that there was an appeal. I was transmitted by the Planning Department the appeal on 11/21/2024. That's when I found out about it. This is why the hearing did not occur in December, we requested it to happen in January, because we didn't have time to prepare for it, because that's when we learned about it. And that's a matter of the county records. The email came from the Planning Department. Prohibited uses, okay, first of all, let's be clear. This is not a standalone parking lot. A standalone parking lot would be my client building a parking lot, and either out of the kindness of their hearts letting anybody park on it, or charging for parking, right? That's a standalone parking lot. This is a overflow valet parking lot that is tied specifically to the Bronx House. It can only be used by the Bronx House patrons, and it can only exist as long as the restaurant exists. So it is not a standalone parking lot, it is an overflow parking lot. Again, it standalone, I mean, we all know what that means. It stands on its own. This does not stand on its own. It stands solely because the Bronx House exists. So that's, that is a, there's no merit to that argument, because that is not what it is. And it is true that standalone parking lots are not a permitted use in this zoning district or in any zoning district in the county. But parking is a requirement in all zoning districts. That is, there's a separate section, parking in all zoning districts, there's a list of uses, there's a list of criteria for parking, the type of parking, the alternative surface clause, which is what we're utilizing in order to maintain the natural integrity of the land, all in conformity with your code. So I just want to make sure that's clear, because it's a little bit of bait and switch in terms of what we're doing, as opposed to how it's been described. We are not doing a standalone parking lot. And the covenant that was discussed, that, in my opinion, and I expressed this to this county attorney in the process leading up to the planning board hearing, I don't think it's necessary. It's very clearly part of the development order that was issued as related to this modification, that this is tied specific to the restaurant. It's in the development order language, right? That's recorded. So, if the restaurant ceases to exist, the parking lot ceases to exist. The covenant, though, because if you bind two lots together that are adjacent, they do a covenant of unity of title in order to make sure that they can't be separated and separate that use, it was a belt-and-suspenders suggestion by the county that we had no problem with, because it's already baked into the development order itself. So, if the covenant is a problem, it doesn't, it can go away, because we don't need it, it's already in the development order. But the need for the county to, or the public to see a covenant that simply says, "This use is tied to this use," I don't think that's relevant to the decision-making of the planning board, which is what you're here to consider. The continued violations, I've kind of already hit on this, whether it's putting up a decimal meter on your screen to show that there's a potential noise violation, that's not what your sound ordinance says. Sound ordinance requires the sheriff's office to come out with somebody who's properly certified in taking sound readings, following a very specific protocol to determine if this noise ordinance has been violated. There has been no finding of noise violations. If there was, they could have put a police report or a violation notice into the record. That's not there, so you can't consider that information that was provided to you as evidence related to this request, because there has been no violations, or at least there's no violations in the record. I'm not aware of any violations, and I do believe the sheriff's office has been called out there many times. If there was a citation, then it would be part of the record. We don't have a citation, no violation. Just because it's loud doesn't mean it violates your sound ordinance. And sound is complicated, especially when you have A1A next door. Some of the pictures you saw with motorcycles, I think that was during Bike Week, oftentimes the road is louder than what's happening on-site, and that's, a proper sound engineer or somebody that knows how to take a sound reading is trained to be able to filter out that ambient noise in order to figure out the source and whether it in fact violates the ordinance. And there has been no findings of fact related to that, so you should, that shouldn't be considered in your decision-making tonight. Lack of community input, I mean, we, there was input at TRC, there was input at Planning Board, there's input tonight. I don't see how there's been lack of community input. There's been substantial input, in fact. A1A was able to review the application and provide their comments to Planning Board in advance of their meeting. There were many people at the Planning Board hearing that showed up. In fact, apparently had an altercation in the parking lot, so I don't understand that objection, because their own appeal essentially admits that there was community input. It may not be the input that they want, but remember, we're dealing with somebody's private property, who has private property rights, and they are developing it according to the RC zoning standard, which, by the way, the RC zoning district has been on the books and on the map when all these people bought their land. They were aware, or should have been aware, when they bought their land, that commercial uses can exist along this corridor. So, being upset about the impact of commercial uses is not the fault of the commercial owners who are utilizing the property as the zoning code allows. Save to concern with traffic patterns. So, this application was specifically designed with the first criteria in mind. Initially, we proposed doing an overflow parking lot, which is exactly what it means. Customer pulls in, there's no parking, they pull out, they go to the overflow parking lot. Problem is, is that there's no sidewalk on that side of A1A. So that can create some significant pedestrian concerns, because you'd have customers of the restaurant walking out of their cars and meandering along the right-of-way, or the edge of the right-of-way to get to the restaurant, and crossing 17th Street, I believe it's 17th Street, that comes out there. So, because of that, we decided to do purely a valet parking lot. That would minimize pedestrian traffic, it would make sure that trained professionals from valet service know what they're doing, would be coming in and out, and not having a whole lot of pedestrian traffic, or people coming into the parking lot and then immediately leaving and creating that potentially dangerous traffic pattern. So, the application, as it was designed, is specific to that criteria, to address that criteria. The planning board accepted that when they approved this special exception. The concern that was raised in the expert witness, I mean, and I say expert in quotation marks, because, you know, we keep asking for a traffic study, but Mr. Crowe's not a traffic engineer. The criteria, the evidentiary rules for expert witnesses requires them to base their opinion on facts and known methodology. Well, there's no facts in here, there's an assumption of a potential no-left-turn requirement. That's not a fact, it's an assumption. So his criteria is based upon a potentiality that may exist, but more importantly, he talks about it being dangerous for there to be short trips within a 50 mile-an-hour zone. There's driveways all along A1A there. Everybody that comes out of the residential subdivision behind that wants to go to Publix is making that same short trip on a 50 mile-an-hour zone. So either A1A, as is currently configured, is already inherently dangerous, or that objection has no merit. And I agree that it would be really nice, particularly within that little segment, which is really has, should, and has become kind of the center of, the commercial center of A1A, of the hammock, because of Publix's location, that they would potentially minimize the speed limit there. But you all don't have the, you know, you don't make that call, that's a DOT call. So, I don't think anybody would object to that being pursued within that segment, but the idea that another driveway out of this property, which could be developed for commercial uses, for residential uses, all of the other vacant lots along there could be developed for commercial uses or residential uses in RC, are all going to have a driveway. All the lots to the north, all the lots to the south, there's driveways all over the place. So, that concept of, because of the speed limit, cars coming out of the thing somehow suddenly creates an endangered situation, this doesn't really, that argument doesn't hold any water in light of just the circumstances on the ground within A1A already. Impact on local residents was the eighth grounds for the appeal. I mean, this application was filed because we were in constant communication with the county about parking within A1A right-of-way. The DOT went out and put no parking signs up to try to stop that. But as you all know, from the pictures that you saw, people continue to park within certain right-of-ways. It's really important to understand that the Bronx House didn't put a sign up that said, "Hey, customers, please park in A1A or along the residential subdivisions." This is what the customers of, whether it's the Bronx House, or the Wine &amp; Cheese Shop, or many of the other businesses along A1A where you see parking within the right-of-way. This is what the customers choose to do when they go to an establishment. The parking criteria that you have in your code is a minimum criteria. It doesn't always capture the actual need of an individual business. It doesn't always know the potential success of an individual business, or the number of people that are going to come on any given day. So when that happens, you end up having individuals, citizens of the county or visitors of the county, choosing to park where they shouldn't. And so, it puts a burden, the business owner might have some responsibility for it, but they're not necessarily culpable for it, they're not attempting to cause the problem. It's a result of the success of their business. We recognize that, and we looked for a solution, which was to purchase a piece of property. And then, in addressing the A1A criteria, we made sure that that property remained as natural as possible, saved as many trees as possible, minimized pedestrian concerns by making it valet-only. I mean, we went through the criteria of A1A, as well as a special exception criteria, and tailored this application specific to that, in order to make this a benefit to the surrounding area. Complaints about the business, I understand neighbors who don't like commercial businesses in their backyard. It's a problem here in the hammock, it's a problem in Flagler Beach with people that live right behind A1A, it's a problem. But, as I said before, the zoning is what it is, and everybody's on notice of what the zoning is and the possibility of commercial uses. So, if there are violations, those are handled through code enforcement. But, as of right now, there are no citations or violations on record that you can base your decision on, as if there's ongoing violations with regard to any of those issues. You have neighbors that are unhappy with the business being there, the business is there as a permitted use by special exception approval within its zoning district. And, I think I hit everything. Just make sure my notes. Yeah, and, you know, the 17th Road parking comment that was made, and I was a little confused whether they were saying we should use 17th Road as a means to, like, for delivery drivers and employees to come in and out. That would be great, but there's a longstanding policy in the county that the side streets within the hammock can't be used for commercial purposes. I don't believe it's actually in the code, I think it's in maybe a technical manual, but that would obviously solve a lot of problems on one hand, it might create other problems on the other hand. So we were working with what we have, in terms of what we're allowed to do. Having cars go in the back of the lot instead of in the front would minimize any traffic safety on A1A, but then that would put commercial vehicles on Sanchez, which I don't think anybody wants. So again, we designed this with what we have to minimize the impacts, to maintain the integrity and the requirements of A1A overlay, by making sure that this is natural as possible. And Commissioner Carney, to your question about buffering, again, when the site plan is finished, the landscaping as presented there will be put in. But, at this stage, everything's on hold, and there was some clearing done, they were just tempted to put the fence up, once we just learned of the appeal and found out that we weren't allowed to move forward with those steps. Because I think you can put a fence up separate from a site development permit, and I think that was the thinking there. We put a stop on everything. If the appeal is denied and the special exception is allowed to stand, the next step would be for us to get our site plan together, go to DOT, determine if we can get the driveway access, because as Mr. Marlin pointed out, if that's denied, the special exception dies. It's a condition to the special exception. If it's approved, then we would come back to the county to get approval to move forward with the site development, which in this case would be limited. with the site development, which in this case would be limited to compacting soils where if that needs to be done and putting, making sure the driveway apron is, is, has the integrity it needs for the traffic, putting up the fence, I mean, the gate, I'm sorry, the gate, and putting in the landscaping buffer. That would be the site development that would happen. So it would be a lot less intense than what you would see for most site development. But there are some, some onsite improvements that would have to be done in order this to be finalized before it can be opened for, opened up for business.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions?
Okay.
Can I just ask one?
Absolutely.
Sure. I didn't see anything that showed, I mean, I'm used to seeing a parking plan.
Yeah.
Okay. But I've never seen where cars park amongst the trees, which is a wonderful concept, but probably very difficult for the developer. But understanding the cooperation effort, how many cars? I don't see or know how this is going to solve the problem. There's been no evidence that shows.
I believe that there was a count in the, in the Planning Board original packet, there was a count, there was a couple of estimates in terms of how you could stack them. I mean, the problem with cars is that it depends on type of vehicles, some vehicles are smaller than others, that's why we have compact spots, right?
Sure.
So I, I think we were some, looking somewhere in the 25 and, yeah, about 25 was about the average that we were expecting to be able to fit on there, which would get, you know, if you look at the, the pictures that I've seen that have been shown to me, whether it was things I received from the county about parking in the right of way on A1A or along the side streets, probably on Bike Week and certain events, there might have been parking, you know, beyond 25 cars. But you can drive up A1A from, from the county line to the county line and find many examples of vehicles all over the place during, during those, those type of special event times. But during regular times, it, it seemed like that was, that would significantly solve the problem. Now, DOT has also put no parking signs up along the A1A right of way. And I would hope that once we get the parking lot going, if the county does see instances of parking not within the valet parking lot or overflow parking being full and parking still being a problem, then, then, then action would be taken, both by my clients as well as by the county, if their clients don't take action. The other benefit of having valet, valet parking services, you have people on site who are basically being paid to monitor parking. So if they catch somebody trying to park on the side street, they're the valets, they can, they can take care of that by moving that car to the valet lot. So it's, you know, there's no perfect solution to any problem, but in terms of the land that was available for purchase, because we would clearly prefer to have a larger parking lot on site, but that requires people adjacent to the property being willing to sell the property. They found the most, the closest, most convenient location that worked for this and they purchased it without any approvals from the county. I mean, they purchased it basically with the hope that this would be a solution. We made the application and the Planning Board agreed and they approved it. So, and we would hope that you would deny the appeal so we can move forward and alleviate this problem as best that this, this, the valet parking would.
And your clients know that Palm Coast is getting ready in the very near future to bring the sewer line and water line down to.
Well, yes. I mean, we, we've been aware of that, the, I believe the site was actually designed to have a tap-in when the, when the line comes, comes, or at least it's designed for one to be put in relatively easily. But you know, there's, there's issues with that. First of all, you have to put the line in, that's time. Two, that's being served by wastewater treatment plant one, which is at capacity at the moment. And current, according to Palm Coast's most recent plans, unless I missed it in the last meeting, we're looking at trying to find funding for the project to get it up to 10.3 million gallons, and that would be a 2028, 2029 delivery date. So whether Palm Coast can even charge those lines without the DEP stepping in or other people in Palm Coast that are waiting in line for connections is, is, is a, is a very, is a very legitimate question. And, and if and when that time comes, this parking lot is not going to generate any extra income for them, right? This parking lot is going to allow us to move cars from where they shouldn't be to where they can be concealed and in a safer place. So if, if and when that time comes, this parking lot may not serve any purpose for my clients. They very well might be able to find other ways to park. But this is all speculative and irrelevant to the question today, which is, is this a permitted use? According to your planning director, it is. The man who's been specifically mandated by your own code to, to make these interpretive calls, it is specifically tied to the special exception. There are restrictions in place to make sure that it maintain, it stays in the way that it's been proposed. So again, like I said, there's no perfect solution, but in terms of what we had, what we are working with, how we designed it in light of the A1A requirements to maintain the integrity of the corridor, we think that this is the best possible solution for the problem that, that, that one could reach. And that's why we made the application.
Good question.
Yeah.
How many, during peak times, how many employees are working?
Is it okay if I have my client come up? Because I don't know the, the peak time operational details.
Right. I mean, that would be when you would have the most employees.
Yeah.
In the evening.
Sorry, I don't want to misspeak on the number because I'm not there at the peak times to count the employee heads.
What was the question, sir?
How many employees work during the busy times, say on a Friday, Saturday?
I would say, I'm sorry, my name is Bruno De Fabio, one of the owners. I'm also a Palm Coast resident as well as some of the other owners that, you know, they've, they were raised here and they chose to raise their family here as well. I just thought that would be important to say. How many employees we have? I would say on the, at the peak, at the most, we would have nine possibly, nine employees, I would think at the most, 10 maybe if it was very, you know, a busy night where we thought, you know, maybe like on a Bike Week where we wanted an extra bartender or something like that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have none at this time. I'm going to ask Mr. Moylan again for some clarification. So there's, as Mr. Livingston said, there's lots of circular conversations or discussions that may not be pertinent to our objective here, which is the, the three points of whether the board's decision was supported on substantial competent evidence, due process, and the nine essential items which have been deleted to four or reduced to four. So, but just, I feel it's important that we, that is the focus of, of, as we go into public comment, that, you know, those are the things ultimately that we're going to be debating and evaluating up here, because there's a lot of, of other things that are, that have been presented that, that don't pertain to those specific things. So, but at this point, we'll go to public comment. And I'll open a floor, you've got three minutes, state your name. We will all be polite and courteous and cordial and I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Robert Sprouse, 109 Sanchez Avenue. I just want to address, first off, three things that their lawyer brought up. First off, I do agree that the events of the September the 10th aren't really relevant to the proceedings, even though I was involved in them. So I just want to state that for the record. I also want to say, like, I think everybody kind of lost their cool that night, including myself, so publicly apologize to these gentlemen. But I do want to say, or ask the question, I guess, if the standalone parking lot exists because Bronx Houses exist, as Mr. Livingston stated, should not those that live within 300 feet of the original property have been notified as well? Because we were not notified. He also talked about the ambient noise during Bike Week. I can tell you, I watched the event from my daughter's bedroom window. This was Saturday AM from approximately nine o'clock to 11 o'clock. These bikers were in the parking lot, hanging out in their beer garden, drinking, having fun. I saw the manager of it out there, like, talking with them, laughing and stuff. So this was a Bronx House event. This was not a matter of just it being Bike Week and busy, okay? You talked about the need for parking. However, if you look at the sheriff's report of all parking, or all calls made for parking violations, there have been a total of 25 made, at least in the several months that I have of the report. Of those, only three were made after they ceased having these events that they were not permitted for. Therefore, I don't think the need for standalone parking is warranted. If they exist to do exactly what they say to do, serve pizza and be an eatery, that's fine. Their parking structure can handle that according to the reports. So, and I'd be happy to share these with you if you can read all my chicken scratch on the side. So that's really all I have to say, though. So.
Pardon me?
Would you like the sheriff's reports too?
You can, for the record, you can deposit them if you don't need them. You can deposit them with the, with the clerk and they'll make it part of the record. Pardon me? I mean, it won't be, it's not pertinent to what we have, but is it important to keep?
There's, that was not part of the record below, but there's nothing that stops him from making it part of the record of this proceeding. It would just be for you to not consider it.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Janet Sullivan. I'm sorry for losing my cool. It just goes to show that there are a lot of people who have been very frustrated with all of this for a very long time. And I heard the first speaker tonight was Mr. Mingle, and that's when I, I started to boil over. He said that parking lots are permitted, they're not permitted in the residential limited commercial district because they're not listed as a special exception because, but they are in the A1A scenic overlay, they're permitted. The A1A scenic overlay does not remove restrictions. The A1A scenic overlay adds additional restrictions to the LDC. So it is obvious at 3.03, 3.13 that parking lots are not permitted, is, is not in the list of special exception, period. Another thing Mr. Mingle said is yes, they have their approval from FDOT. Obviously, they didn't, they haven't even applied. So this conversation got started off in a really weird way tonight with the, with the Planning Board. And when all of the, the Bronx Pizza, I'm saying two years ago, parking thing started, we were on it. I went to Bronx Pizza, I used to be a, a patron, but I would go even when I wasn't a patron, and I would count the employees. Busy nights, there's no less than 15 employees. Nine is not correct. So thanks very much. Again, I'm sorry.
You're fine. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Todd Swinderman. I live in the Hammock. I actually own two properties adjacent or very near Bronx Pizza. I just purchased a home on, at 70 Sanchez, and I have a business, the Hammock Thrift Shop, just down the street. Parking's a problem, we all recognize that. They're parking in our parking lot at the Hammock Thrift Shop, they're parking at Title Chain. We have to put barriers up. Just the other night, we had to have one towed away. So it is a problem and I, I, I do empathize with the problem I have. The problem that, that is being presented to you is a problem of symptoms. You're not addressing the root cause. Two basic root causes here are not enforcing the requirements in the Land Development Code and the original approval, which was for, I think roughly 54 seats. They have, well, last count, we did 115. So they've doubled or tripled the seats. That's one part of the root cause of the problem. The second problem is it just is creating a lot of safety problems on our street. Just the other night, my daughter, who lives above the Hammock Thrift Shop, called the police. Car parked right in the middle of, of Sanchez. Evidently, the word's gone out not to treat this as a serious problem. The cop shows up, would not issue a ticket. His reason, there was no line painted, so he couldn't really tell where the street was. So to me, it seems, and I'm an engineer, I deal with these types of problems all the time of trying to find the root cause. The root cause is the Land Development Code doesn't adequately assign enough parking spots for the number of seats in these restaurants. It's all up and down that highway. So that's the one root cause. You can fix that in the future. Today, you can address the root cause by forcing them to live to their seating requirements. You can approve this, but make the approval disappear when the sewer comes through. And then everybody will be in compliance and everybody will be happy. Thank you very much.
Good evening. It's, they'll turn it on in the, once we give them the okay.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Evening.
Commissioners and Chairman Dance. My name's Jody Bollinger, I live at 5648 North Ocean Shore. I'd like to comment on four items. The first one has to do with this prohibited use. It's already been mentioned, 3.03 RC, residential RC District, prohibited uses. Number one, any use not specifically granted by right or by special exception. There are four uses permitted by right in the RC District, and there are 20 uses permitted by special exception. None of those uses that are listed is a valet parking lot. Therefore, a valet parking lot is a prohibited use. The argument was made that, oh, it's part of the Bronx deal? So I could go buy a parcel a half mile down the road and say, this is for Bronx, for their valet parking, and it's not even near, near there. It's a standalone valet parking lot. It's not adjacent to Bronx. Second, Ms. Groom, Mr. Clark and I met with staff on May 13th, 2024, to discuss code violations in the Hammock. One of our questions had to do with parcels being used as parking lots. We were informed by Mr. Mingle that in order for a parcel to be used as a parking lot by a business, it had to be purchased by the business, which Bronx has done, but that a unity of title was needed. Our understanding was and is that in order to obtain a unity of title, the parcel must be adjacent to the business. The parcel under appeal is not adjacent to the Bronx property. Third, I asked at the September 10th Planning Board hearing if the valet parking lot approval was a prelude to the reopening of the Beer Garden operation. I will ask this again because the food trucks are still on the site, even though we have been told repeatedly that they're illegal. At the aforementioned meeting back in May, we were informed that the food trucks are illegal. A June 18th email from Mr. Mingle says that they are illegal. And at the August 5th Board of County Commission meeting, Mrs. Petito stated that Bronx is aware that the food trucks are not permitted, but they're still there. Fourth, according to the Land Development Code, the parking requirement, right there, for restaurants is one parking space for every 50 square feet of seating. Originally, Bronx provided 15 parking spaces for customers, which equates to parking for 750 square feet of seating area. Four more parking spaces were added for employees and an ADA space. But after receiving its certificate of occupation, another 750 square feet of seating was added on the porch. The porch is 50 by 15, which equals 750. So the 19 parking spaces for now 1,500 square feet of seating is a code violation. An illegal valet parking lot should not be the remedy for a code violation of the parking requirements. Thank you very much for your time.
Here it comes. You can look up there.
That's right. I was going to point to some things. All right. My, my name's Dennis Clark. I live at 5784 North Ocean Shore Boulevard, about a mile from. Um, I live at 5784 North Ocean Shore Boulevard, about a mile from, from the Bronx House. I could hear the, I could hear the, the bands, by the way. Good evening, by the way. On the surface, this seems like a great way to expand parking and get vehicles off the back roads, and I commend the business owners for trying. However, besides violating at least two requirements in the land development code, this will surely create a traffic nightmare on A1A. It does not take a traffic expert to see that the traffic pattern created by the valet parking system will create an extremely dangerous situation. This was confirmed by the competent substantial evidence submitted. That's what's shown there and that was presented, uh, to the, uh, planning board. Uh, he, Thad Crowe is a highly qualified, uh, planning director for, for, uh, Clay County. Now hopefully you can see this. Let's go through a likely scenario. I pull up to Bronx House, driving south on A1A, looking for takeout pizza. So I don't really want to valet park. I find that there's a line of cars waiting to get into the parking lot. Why? Oh, they are valet parking now. I get in line blocking southbound A1A, but the cars are traveling at 50 miles per hour. I notice that there are other vehicles driving north, trying to make a left turn into Bronx House, now blocking the northbound traffic on A1A. One of them is the valet parking attendant who cannot get their car back into the, into the lot for the valet customer. We're at a deadlock, more cars backing up in both directions. Meanwhile, somebody is trying to exit the illegal parking lot to the north of the driveway and no vehicles can exit, turning left from Publix. How is this a good idea? And you can see that there's, um, right turn only out of Bronx House Pizza. That's, that's part of, uh, the FDOT regulation on that driveway and others nearby. All of this is because Bronx House has doubled their seating area from their approved 54 seats. Without expanding off-street parking. This valet parking solution will only work when all conditions are perfect and that will not be the norm. Alternative valet queuing locations will not work either. The easy fix is to scale back to their approved 54 seats until sewer is available, then create 24 spaces behind the building without cutting a tree. I did the work. Okay. If anyone mentions that the Sherrette suggested a downtown Hammock with shared parking, that is correct. The critical difference is the shared parking was for a village center where you would walk the various businesses, like European Village. The goal was to reduce the traffic on A1A. I often wake up thinking about the dangerous situation and accidents this will cause on A1A. I now take it off of my shoulders and place it on yours. Please deny this amendment for a special exception for a valet parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Absolutely. Absolutely. It's open for everybody.
Great. I just wanna, um.
Say your name again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bruno De Fabio with Bronx House Pizza. Um, I just wanted to respectfully, um, give some context to the comments that Leah, uh, made earlier. She was the first one. She's the one that brought the, uh, appeal. Again, I, I think she painted an unfair picture of us all. We are all now Palm Coast residents. We are neighbors with them as well. We're raising our children in this community and three of the partners grew up in this community. She mentioned corporate greed. Bronx House on, in Hammock has donated $100,000 of their own money to charity in 2024 and it stayed local. So you really can't accuse us of being greedy corporate, um, profit mongers. Um, we, we, um, donated all of this money to, uh, locally and on, on Route 100. I forgot the name of the hospital. I'm a little bit nervous speaking right now. $85,000 to them. We also gave over $15,000 to, uh, St. Francis, uh, homeless shelter. We provide meals there every single month. That doesn't sound like corporate greed to me. I personally invested my entire life savings in this. When would it be appropriate for me to get some of my money back? I just invested another $440,000 to make a net gain for every single business in that area. Okay? $440,000. How much money do you think we make? I have to forego years of profit? What am I supposed to tell my family? To give a net gain to the entire community? I just feel that the picture painted of us was unfair. She also said that we made comments when people were speaking that night. That is completely false. I think we would have been reprimanded if that was the case. And lastly, um, we walked out of, of this building to the parking lot, uh, you know, as winners. We were, we walked with Dennis Baer, who I believe was the, the attorney that they had hired. And things did get heated in the parking lot. I appreciate the apology from, to the people that were here, but it was not caused by us. We waited for the police to come and I reminded Dennis Baer that he had an ethical obligation to tell the truth. We waited for the police. There was no summons issued at all. We won that night. We were not crazed as, as, um, as the, the, the paint, the picture was painted. And, and that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, um, again, free, I give you free rein to, this is public comment, but almost all of that had nothing to do with.
I under, I understand that, but everything that she said, you know, disparaging us had nothing to do with it. I just want you to know, we're good people. She painted us as bad people. We're not. So in case somebody just decided, well, we're not gonna go eat there because they're, you know, they're not good people. I just wanted to paint a contrary picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Ed White. I live at 27 Ocean Street, up towards Washington Oaks in the Hammock, just down the road from Bronx House Pizza. Uh, I've eaten there multiple times and I've enjoyed music in the Beer Garden more than once. That said, we have rules in the Hammock, rules that we've all worked very hard on, land development code, A1AC scenic overlay, et cetera. We're not against business in the Hammock. We're not against progress. We just want to follow the rules. We don't want to set bad precedents. We don't want to break the rules and then get rewarded with a special exception that gets around the rules. Now, I had two other pages of points. I'm not gonna do that because I think they've been covered by everyone else who has spoken. But I do want to respectfully take a look at what might be a way to go. And I know that's not a decision that you can make tonight, but you can remand it back to the Planning Development Board and they can try to come up with a better solution, let me say. This has been touched on by both Dennis and Todd, who spoke earlier. But in my opinion, if you were going to grant a special exception, it should only be done temporarily. Don't grant a permanent special exception. That would set a bad precedent. You can grant a temporary special exception until sewer is installed on A1A. It'll help alleviate a parking problem, which we do have. Then you could require Bronx House Pizza to agree to hook up to the sewer as soon as it is available. Once hooked up, you could further, or let's say Bronx Pizza could agree to build additional parking on their property proper. There's room to do that where the septic is now. Dennis had a diagram up there a few minutes ago. And finally, once additional parking is built, you could get Bronx House Pizza to agree not to use what we consider an illegal standalone parking lot. So there's a suggestion of maybe a better way to go if you decide to grant the special exception. Thank you for listening. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, my name is Dr. Lynn Bravo-Rosewater and I live at 200 Ocean Crest Drive in the Hammock. Over the past two years, there's been lots of meetings about developing the new, um, land development code, the, the comp plan and the overlay. What I'm concerned about is that once things get approved, there is no follow-through if what you've granted is what is being done. So Bronx Pizza had 54 seats. They built more seats on. They did not ask, they didn't come in and say, can you give us a special exception? You know, we can put a porch here. They put that on. So now they have their 45 seats and they put on the porch. Then they put a patio in the back. The rules are whatever you're granted as seating, you may have 25% of it outdoors. 25%. They were granted 54. That means 14 people. They could have patio 14 people. They not only put in a patio, they put in a beer garden over a septic system. I didn't see anything in the rules that said you can't have stuff over your septic system, but. So they did double to triple the number of people that they had. So the parking problem is because they did things, the county did nothing, did nothing. There were all kinds of reports of problems. When you see all those cars parked, you say, well, for 54 people or whatever, whatever they added on, when they put on their porch, that's a lot of cars. Well, they had so many more people. And they, they were approved as a pizza place. They were not approved as a nightclub, as a place to have bands. And so one of the things that I'm concerned about as a citizen is how do we let this happen? And what's going to happen because they disregarded all these different codes? That we're spending two years to talk about how to update? Although if we really want to know what the code says, we could just ask what Adam Mingle says and that's what the code is, which is not why I believe you spend two years to do this. So I feel that giving a parking lot is a reward for bad behavior. And I think the fault lies with a lack of anything to do for compliance. You cannot have all these rules and then not watch out over what goes on. I hope you will refuse this. They don't deserve to be rewarded.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening, Commissioners. Michael Goodman.
Evening.
I'm coming up here to, uh, you know, after listening to all these comments, it's kind of disheartening when you think about it. We have done everything correctly. You know, I don't want to get into personal things, so I won't. But, you know, Dennis Clark makes this nice map for you. Well, this, you know, even when the sewer goes away, let's say that happens, the sewer comes, comes down, A1A. Well, he has parking designs on top of septic tanks. Septic tanks don't go away. He has designs where trees might be. You know, Mr. Clark does a wonderful job of making drawings, but it's not the reality. Now, as far as our seating capacity, our seating capacity is not, what are they saying? 52? It's 104 because the majority of the things that we sell there are single serve, which is pizza by the slice or by the pie. So this was approved by a health department. So their information is old information. It is not the information that is currently in place. So a lot of their stuff is speculation and they've talked about what they've done in the past. Well, I don't want to mention, uh, certain restaurants, but take a drive down there and see how dangerous it is when you come around a curve. Oh, there, wow, there's no problem with parking. It's okay to park on the thing when there's two driveways within 50 feet and people are coming along at 50 miles an hour. That's okay. They don't talk about, gee, Bartlett's, are they not any part of this problem? Gee, I'm wondering where they're parking. It can't be all our cars. It can't all be attributed to the Bronx House. You have another business there, right next door. So think about the total picture, not a narrow picture like they're trying to make it look like. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? You spoke once. Now you're all done, unfortunately. I know we have rules too. I apologize. All right. If I don't see anybody else coming up, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the commission. Have testimony. There's time for additional questions to staff, the applicant, um, the appellate or, and then the defendant. So now's the time.
I have one additional, um, comment to address or with staff, with Adam. Adam, um, they spoke of, um, it not being a special exception, a permitted use. So do you want to add, um, permitted special exception? Although it's an RC, tell me what rises the level of the commercial. I mean, it doesn't really, when I'm in here, I don't see it specifically. It says what's prohibited and then what's allowed as a special exception, but it doesn't say what necessarily rises to the level of the commercial, just other than it saying it needs to be low impact, um, and have, and the overall character of the corridor. So I'm just curi, it's more of a curiosity thing at this point. It's not in the prohibited items. It's not specific in the special exception, but the commercial piece of it only addresses that it needs to be, commercial use needs to be limited to having low impact to the resident, to establish residential uses. So does it, where does it fall?
Parking lot is not a prohibited use in the RC district. You have to have parking. I, I don't, what else to say? I, I like the nomenclature. You heard the appellant saying standalone. I get that. I, you know, that, that's the, that's the way to drive that home.
Yeah, it's hard for me to wrap, so just.
It's not a standalone. That's why we modified the special exception, so.
How do you not have in RC a parking lot? Because it's a commercial house, commercial. How do you not have parking? So it's just, that, that's only, you know, I think that was the only thing I was trying to wrap my head around on the whole.
So is your head wrapped? Do you understand?
My head wrapped.
I'm not. I'm, I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree. I, I can't see why one half of the room is saying it's not permitted and the other half is saying it is permitted. What is it? What is the answer?
It, it is not a standalone parking lot.
It is a standalone parking lot.
Okay.
You take cars, you put it on a piece of property and you go home when you're done. It's a parking lot. Is the word standalone in front of the, is the word standalone used in the actual land development code?
It is not. And I think that's the per, the, the, uh, the perjurer, the, what the, the, the point that the, the, uh, appellants are trying to make is that they're, they're adding that as the qualifier.
And you're quali, you're saying that it's not standalone because a business, a business owns it, therefore it's linked to the business.
No. The special exception approval said that, that so long as the pizza business, uh, it makes sure I get the, the linkage. Pizza business is there, the parking lot is there. It's not a business ownership that, that's there. It's, it's a specific business.
But it's not next door to the business.
Doesn't, it's not required to be.
So. This is about as clear as mo- This is about as clear as mud. And the other thing that I would like to state is I've not been up here very long. I got four and some, three and some odd years to go. I've listened to more appeals of the board's actions in one month than, than I don't want to look at anymore. So I did watch the video of the, of the planning board. It would be very helpful to this board, especially in light of the fact that this is the third appeal in the last month, that your board, this board, and Sean, this is for you too, this board needs to go one through nine. I did it in Flagler Beach. All of us need to know what their answers to one through nine. We have to hear the answers. And I don't think your statement about, yes, they, they covered all those. I don't think they did. I watched the video. I didn't record it, you know, I didn't memorize it. But we need to see more of what that PAR board, I call it PAR, I'm sorry, Planning and Development Board, how they're answering those nine, those nine questions. Cause it's going to come back to us every time. So I think we're a little weak on that. That's my, that's my, I, I don't, I don't see it as a permitted use. I just don't.
Commissioner Carney, if I may.
Please.
The burden is on the appellant to show that the planning board did not make the right findings on the nine criteria. The findings are in writing, they're in the record. As far as the standalone, I, I can chime in. And I think reasonable people maybe can have different opinions on that. The, the reason it's not a standalone, in my view, is that the recorded document, the order of the planning board links them together. And if they were, if the restaurant were to go away, this could not just operate as a parking lot by itself. And if it did, it would be a zoning violation that we could drag them in front of the magistrate for enforcement. In addition, as Mr. Livingston stated, we also required, the planning board required that they file a covenant in the official records linking the two together. So that's in the title and it's a part of the zoning. So they, they operate together, just like we've all valeted cars in the past and they're usually are offsite. That's usually how valet works. Now, it's okay to disagree, but I'm just letting you know the view, I think, how the planning board came to their decision and, and what it's based on.
And we tried valet in Flagler Beach and it did not work. Who's going to monitor that there is a valet company or somebody that they have a orange vest on that is working, that is working? When are we going to know if it's actually being used for valet or not?
Well, usually anytime the Bronx House does, you know, something that crosses the line, we hear about it right away. We get, they're under the microscope.
No, I'm not going to dispute that. Okay. But we're not going to do, we're not going to be proactive and we're not going to require certain things. All right, I got it.
Again, there's, there's been suggestions of floating like conditions, but I have to go back to the role and the task that we have. Unless the, the property owner suggested improvements or changes, we, we can't, it's not for us. We're reviewing, just clarify if I can, we're not re, we're not re debating the issue. We're, we're clarifying that the planning board went through their appropriate processes and due diligence.
That, that's correct. And, and in doing so, it is fair to ask this question about standalone, if that's allowed in the corridor, that, you know, because we have to make sure they followed the correct law. So it's a, it's a fair question.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from Mr. Mangle? I'm, I'm perturbed on a couple of issues. One, there's a lot of effort put into trying to solve a problem. And, and we've all seen that it's inherent everywhere up and down A1A. It's inherent, somebody made some great points about the root causes and, and the root causes in the land development code, they stated, and it is. And I asked the question about employees because the original application stated four employees and we have nine to 10 at a peak. And, and that right there is problematic in making the original site plan work. And my hope if, is that this is first and foremost employee parking and then secondarily a, another form of parking to get. I think the other thing that we're trying to solve is getting vehicles off of A1A and the side streets. That's a multi-pronged process of code enforcement. And, and it, you know, I think the problems people have stated about what's been reported to the sheriff's office and not having success in getting people sighted, might just be a little education campaign with the sheriff on, on, on that zone. Cause they do break up the county into zones, so we just have to talk to the zone leaders in those areas. And first and foremost is, is safety. Personally, I find it offensive and, and a huge safety issue that the right of way parking is what's abundant because any, any loss of attention where you, where you veer off onto the shoulder is, is, is what will lead to problems with all the other right of way parking. So we're, we're trying to solve a problem that I think is just baked into the LDC. It's, and it's evident by the fact that the numbers just aren't picking up. The other one is, is what's happened. This is a four-year project. This is not a, a project that was approved last year. This was thought out and approved pre-COVID and, and a lot of things have changed post-COVID. Uber Eats, all the delivery drivers, drive up parking where you're waiting for your own order to be brought out. Those are things that, that are going to be part of the new LDC as we look at, at trends and, and parking requirements. But it's, it's how do we make a root cause problem in the LDC and make the community safer? I'm not sure about, about some of the points that were made. I go back to the, go back to the planning board and whether, you know, the one advantage, we've seen two things go back to the planning board where one was, was a magistrate's hearing. The other one was, was an applicant who did not have professional help and just submitted it on her own. And, and there were obvious flaws in that application. The other one was, was us coming up with, you know, a different interpretation of, of what came up. And both of those went back. I think under this one, whether the planning board's decision was supported by competent substantial evidence, the original applicant had professional legal assistance in making sure that all nine parts were, and actually only, what do we say, four of them were pertinent. And all four, at least when the planning board went through all four of those issues. So we can disagree on what's competent evidence. It doesn't say that, that we have to agree on what's competent evidence. We just have to make sure that competent evidence was, was approved. And my hardest part up here is I may not agree with the planning board, but part of what we have to do is judge based on the parameters legal has given us because we're trying to avoid additional legal issues. So if we follow the definition and the process as it's outlined legally, we kind of insulate ourselves and, and provide data or we, we speak and support, or don't support the planning board on that end. Due process was accorded. And then whether the essential requirements of the, of the nine points. I mean, I'm still, some good points have been raised here. My, right, my, I keep going back to trying to solve problems with the parking. And, and I'll, I'll leave those comments where they are. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, if I could address the enforcement parking issue. I've met with the area commander and with the sheriff himself on this issue. And they refused to ticket on A1A until the signs were up. Once the signs were up, they issued warnings. But they won't ticket on 17th or Hernandez. And I think maybe we could get that changed. We own those.
Be posted? There's, there's, there.
No, there's not a no parking sign.
There's no.
But we control that. We could put no parking signs up and then he will ticket.
Well, that's why I was saying, is it legal to put, is it, is it a no parking zone in the right of way of 17?
Problem we had before was, short answer, statute allows you to park on right of way unless it's specified that you cannot. The problem we had before is that the cars were parked perpendicular to the right of way.
That's on a state road.
Statute says you can only.
State road. That's on A1A. And, and we fixed that. FDOT came in and put the signs up because you can't park there. And that, that solved that problem, but we still have the problem on 17th.
They were, they were parked perpendicular. And so we had talked with them at the time. Our conversation with the zone commander and the deputies at the time was that parallel parking would be permitted.
But is that, and since we have, again.
I think it is discretionary.
And as we go to the LDC or even through the overlay, scenic A1A, can that be a restriction in the scenic A1A overlay?
I, I would answer wholeheartedly yes, because we, one of the other parts, you heard it mentioned earlier, was that we would not allow commercial traffic on an unimproved street in the hammock. That's our, been our policy for, for years. Needs to be in some way codified, but that, that was, that's the rub we've had all along is that, you know, clearly this is commercial traffic on a residential street, unimproved.
And it's hard without the delineations in the trees. It's hard to, once somebody parks the wrong way, it's hard to maneuver.
Yes, sir.
But thank you. That's another, I think, avenue for us.
Something maybe we can fix.
Right.
Yeah. It's our street.
Right.
You know, I, just real quick, we talked about root causes and I recall sitting with the planning board up here, we talked about comprehensive plan that we were going to maybe, I thought we had a consensus to take it at this area and certain areas and work through the issues that keep, we keep bumping up against in the new comp plan. But I don't know where that went.
Well, these are more LDC type issues, not necessarily complian.
Well, but we were also talked about just having a workshop on the hammock specifically to solution for things that just keep coming up and up and up again with the problems out there.
Well, we have the scenic. I think that's where the scenic comes into play. So when we get to the.
I'm just, to wrap it up here, I, I went through this, I, trying to stick very specific to the ask here by legal. And I mean, I, I did not, I didn't have an, I couldn't find an issue in what they, what the planning board reviewed. So I have a lot more to say about that, but.
I'm ready to say, I'd like to call, you know, call the.
Make a motion.
I move, I move that, I don't remember what she said anymore because it's been an hour and my brain is tired. So maybe you can repeat what we have to.
Option one would be approving the appeal and that would overturn the planning and development board's decision. So you could maybe just skip the option numbers. Approve the appeal, overturn the planning board. Deny the appeal, uphold the planning board, the special exception remains in place. Third option is to send it back, remand it back. Fourth option would be to continue to a time and date certain.
Well, I move, I'm going to make a motion to move that we deny the appeal.
I have a motion from Commissioner Richardson to deny the appeal.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any final chance to state a case one way or the other?
I think enough has been discussed here.
All right, just checking, making sure.
No, thank you for asking, but we've got to get to a decision at some time today.
Okay. All right. A motion by Commissioner Richardson to deny the appeal, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. I will call the question. So an I vote is to deny the appeal. All those in favor of denying the appeal signify with I.
I.
I. Any opposed?
I, I'm opposed.
Two opposed. The deny, the denial, the appeal is denied. All right. There is, at this time, we will go to county administrator report.
Thank you. I know it's getting late and I just have a couple of things I need to go over. Just wanted to remind everybody that we will be hosting the joint city-county meeting here on February 5th at 5:30. There are four topics for discussion, the beach management funding, stormwater flooding, roadway and impact fees. And then today we added the airport overlay ordinance. We're not going to have another meeting in advance of the joint meeting, so I wanted to open it up for discussion just to identify which two board members are going to represent us at that meeting.
Well, I, yeah, we usually have two. I mean, I would, I will offer my services to chair the meeting. We hold it here, right?
Correct. It'll be here in the boardroom at 5:30.
I volunteer to be the second one.
Okay. Everybody good? Okay.
Can the rest of us be in the meeting though, right?
Yeah.
Not just not on the dais, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And then I just wanted to let you know that on Thursday, this Thursday, the 16th, myself along with some of our staff will be attending Town and Marine Land to discuss and review our joint response to the Florida Communities Trust. I anticipate that following that meeting, we'll be sending a letter to them on Friday, the 17th. That's in response to the FCT non-compliance issues at River to Sea. If you'd like to see a draft of the letter that was created, I've shared it with the town if you all would like to see it, that's fine. Just let me know. And then the 2025 Flagler County Citizens Academy kicks off on Wednesday, January 29th at 9:00 AM, getting to know your county government. It'll be with administration, communications and our county attorney's office. We look forward to meeting with residents to enhance public understanding of county government operations. And then I also wanted to mention that last week, we attended Northeast Florida Regional Councils, the 2024 Regional Awards for Excellence. We were thrilled to be in attendance, as well as the city of Palm Coast, who was recognized under the category of planning and growth management for the development of their comprehensive plan. Imagine 2050, City on the Rise. And then Flagler County was recognized for our own drone program under the category of public safety for our work and obtaining the FAA certificate of waiver beyond the visual line of sight. So these awards are really a testament to the city and county commitment to serving the region and making meaningful impacts on the lives of our residents. So I just wanted to say congratulations. So I just wanted to say congratulations to everybody involved. And that is it. Concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney comments, Mr. Moylan.
No report, Chairman.
All right, thank you. Community outreach. This is our second 30-minute time period's been allocated for public comment for items not on the agenda. Anybody for public comment? Everybody's gone. Thank you for the few that are still here. All right, I'll bring it back to the board, close public comment, and we'll go with commissioner reports. Start with my right, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, sometimes things go the way some people want, and sometimes it doesn't. I'm gonna always stand behind my belief in what I hear and what I know and what I'm instructed to do. I appreciate all the folks that were here today and the Family Life Center here today. It seems like it was yesterday, and it's been a long night, so I'm gonna leave it with, you know, thank you all for being a part of a great county that we have, and I'm looking forward to the next three and three-quarter years to be here to try to bring some kindness and love to the community. And I want to congratulate Mr. Long as a new member. I'll leave it to you now. He, I finally got his right ear. That's I won. I won.
I have no report.
All right, Commissioner Pennington.
I'm gonna be the bad guy. Yeah, I'm gonna make you stay here a few more minutes, because we only meet once, and we didn't address annexation. We had a lot of talks tonight about Veranda Bay. I got a lot of emails on Veranda Bay, and I'm just gonna be that person that says it one more time to be really clear, because I heard a rumor that Putnam County actually talked about us today on the, on their county commission. I haven't been able to hear it first, but about the growth and annexation over here. And I think it was more probably to do with Benel than us, because they don't understand. But, but I thought, you know, things that keep me up at night, and these two projects just make me cringe. So I'm gonna say it one more time, is I don't understand why a Florida statute can tell us that we can't create an enclave. I don't understand why we as a board can pick and choose what statutes to follow. I don't, I don't get that, particularly with something so drastic as what they're facing down there. And now there's threats of lawsuits and everything else. And I don't think those cities will ever voluntarily stop the annexation and comply with the state law, but I think it's up to us to be made to do so. So I don't see how we can allow that enclave to happen to those people. I don't think, I don't see how we can force them into that situation. And I don't see, I don't, I don't want to pick and choose statutes, I want to follow statutes. So, you know, I bring it back here again, a consensus again, you know, Mr. Adid said, you know, we should do it in our, or we could do an interlocal agreement, or we're supposed to do an interlocal agreement. You know, I know Mr. Danci wasn't here for the meeting, you said you wanted to get along with the city, but the city commissioners are not my worry. My worry is the people that live down there. My worry's Flagler County. So I'll bring it back here one more time and ask us, you know, do we want to really push, you know, to stop the enclave, to stop the annexation, to have an interlocal agreement so we can build a parameter around it? Do we want to follow the statute around annexation? Do we want to start having processes for annexation? As it seems to happen every day, something's annexing out of us. I bring it back here, and I ask you that, and I think that's, I don't think we can just keep thinking about it or talk, you know, it needs to be a firm yes or no, you know, that we stick our foot and say, you know, we need an agreement on this if we're gonna allow it to occur, and we need that going forward. And I think there's an enclave within the Benel one, if I'm not mistaken.
There's multiple, but.
There's, yeah, I was gonna bring that up. There's, there's lots of enclaves, according to our attorney.
Said.
So why is this one different?
So I said to somebody, I got a phone call, and it was something, and, you know, you'd think what was going on with my, my, my home life would keep me up at night, but it's been this place lately keeping me up at night, because it's like Groundhog Day, same problems, same Bronx pizza, the same this, and no real solutions. And I see burnout in staff. I can feel it, there's burnout. I don't see doing something differently about things, and it's gotta change, because I can't live like this, you know? If you're, you know, I don't know what the problem is, but I don't want to go, I'm going into year three with one year, year one problems still, and it's exhaustive. You know, I don't, I just can't believe we're still here with a lot of things. The annexation just really bothers me that we're not, we're choosing to ignore the statutes. And I, I don't know what the right answer is, and I want to have the right answer, and I want to fix it, and I want to go to bed at night. And I don't want to keep telling people, oh, it's coming, it's coming, or we're working on it, we're working on it, animal, animal municipal shelter. They don't have a plan. They don't have a plan for growth, they don't have money for growth. We're growing. We can't just keep saying, oh, yeah, they're back again, you know, as usual. I was reading the UFAG extension project. I thought that that, when we met with this project, I thought it was supposed to be a separate building. It looks like it's just a wing, you know? I don't know how that happened, because I thought maybe this would be a potential discussion about having a municipal shelter, but this uses the existing building for UFAG extension. So how did that happen? I don't know. I wish we could all get on the same page, and I'm, you know, I wish we could solve some of this. And so I'm tired, and I'm tired of the same solutions being, you know, spend more, tax more, you know, create new taxes, and allow annexation to occur. They drive me nuts. So, sorry. But how to get it off me?
Gotcha.
I'm done. So I would like to talk about annexation more.
Sure. I would like to too, Leanne, thank you.
Just because I think those folks deserve it, that are being sucked into something they didn't sign up for. And I thought about his chickens. Flagler Beach gonna let him have chickens?
No, we already voted it down.
So, anyways.
So.
We're gonna have to come back to you.
I want to talk, oh, you, I have to come back?
I'm just giving you a hard.
Oh, okay.
I will give you the floor.
No, I just want you to, you read the article that the developer came back and wants, is on temporary, I use the word hold, whatever he called it. I didn't see the letter. I think a couple of people got ahold of the letter, but the suggestion in the article is that he will not annex the east side, so it won't make an enclave. So this, this development, for better word, for lack of better word, is hell-bent on getting this done. So, huh? So I, I think, and I've asked Flagler Beach, I've looked at the state report that came back to Flagler Beach. I've met with our attorney on what some of this information or lack of information means, and it basically means that they need help. I believe the city needs help working through this. But if they don't ask us for help, how can we give them help? A ordinance, I, I think if this board did enough research on what is actually happening on John Anderson, I think that we might be able to come together and at least write a resolution to the City of Flagler Beach, saying that we're not in favor of it. A resolution, a letter, something, and give the reasons why we would not be in favor of that annexation. And I guess, Leanne and I would need at least one more person to say it's worth an investment in the future of John Anderson Highway to state our opinion. There's nothing illegal about stating an opinion or requesting or saying that we're not, that we're opposed to it. They haven't given our staff the requested information that we've asked for. They've not done a feasibility study. They've not given the state back any substantial data or information that the state has asked for, stating that they don't have to. I mean, this is just good growth. This is just good planned growth, and how do we want to do it? And I don't know. Then, if you look at the same book, Leanne, page 38, the City of Flagler Beach requests money from the state to build wells for this development. So why isn't it in the development agreement that the developer builds the wells or finds the wells or does something? Why would the citizens of Flagler County and Flagler Beach have to pay for the development wells? Obviously, the city wouldn't ask for it if they, if they had their, if they didn't need more water. So I, I don't know that City of Flagler Beach has looked at all the fine details and the impact that this is gonna have. These citizens are gonna have to build these wells, these citizens are gonna have to build these water, these plants to get ready for something that I just don't think they're ready for. They don't discuss safety in their plan, they don't discuss anything. It's like a blank sheet. They do protect some oaks, but other than that, I, I just think that, I'm not afraid to make a statement or to let the city know, but that would have to come from the board.
Is, I mean, I don't mind, I mean, Adam has put in, for both developments, put in a great deal of work. I don't know that we as a team have gotten together after this, with the state's findings and their letter back. I think I would find it helpful to be able to go through the, those state findings, because we have a lot of concerns that affect the county. And I don't know that we've, we've addressed, what have we addressed, Sean? We've addressed environmental concerns, wetlands, floodplains, trees, and some other, the road.
And the construction of the Spine Road.
Yeah, the Spine Road and, and taking over portion of John Anderson.
Well, that's still an open question.
Right. So, but that really was the limit. There's, you even mentioned a ton of other, as far as fire, rescue, our needs in order to continue to supply those services countywide. I would find it helpful so that we all had, you know, time to discuss the impacts on the county and, and what we need to share with the, both entities, City of Benel and Flagler Beach, on how this is gonna impact the county, county residents. I'm open to both of those conversations, now that both of them have received significant impact back. So if we can schedule.
So would that be a workshop? Would that be a general business? What would that be?
That would be a workshop.
Okay.
And just on Thursday night, a developer came to Flagler Beach and, and got the approval on a very, it's a very small workforce housing. I think there's 28 units or 25 units. And the first thing out of the developer's mouth was, and we understand the impact of the new state of Florida statutes on stormwater, and not only are they bad this year, they're gonna get worse next year. So the current developer at the, at the Veranda, all he'll say is, we're gonna follow whatever the state tells us to do.
Well, their commission already, by consensus, told them to include that.
It's not in the.
It's not in it yet, I know.
It's not in it.
But they've, they've already given them the direction by consensus at the one public hearing. Commissioner Hanson, sorry, my apologies, I should have gone with you first.
It's been a wonky day, meeting.
Well, a couple of things, I was, Leanne stole my thunder, because I don't, this, this issue of the annexation and the enclave, I think, first of all, I don't understand why we have to buckle on, on annexation. I don't understand why we can't tell them to take a hike. We don't want that. We, it's not good for the county. We should be running that. We should be in charge of that whole development issue, and, because I think we can protect the, the lands, the Bullo Creek area and the runoff there, I think we can do that. And I'm not sure if the city can. We can do that. And the enclave issue, I can't remember if it was Sean or whoever said that, we have enclaves all over the place in the county. So why is this one different?
Because of the public outcry. I looked into it. Well, it's because enough people are objecting to the enclave. If there weren't, if there's no opposition to the enclave, then it doesn't become a big.
But the county seat becomes smaller and smaller the more it develops. There should be a procedure of how we, in how we handle annexation that does not meet the criteria of the statute. Some of them meet it, and you're just, they're gone, it's over. But some of these are not urbanized, enclave, whatever, we should be holding to that.
How about the?
And setting it down and.
How often do we get the letter from Benel that just says, oh, by the way, we're annexing?
See you later.
Yeah, see you later. Done deal. And we don't even get a vote.
We're getting reversals now, they're coming back.
Yeah, there are some coming back, yeah, but we don't even get a vote. So, yeah, that troubled me for a long time on this, we just don't get a vote, they just take it. And, and Palm Coast is the worst. I mean, they weaponize the water. They've weaponized that. You don't annex, no water. How fair is that? I don't get that. So, anyway.
You can pay the surcharge.
Well, because they want the customers and they want the money.
They want the money, yeah.
All right, anything else, sir?
That's enough.
So do we have a consensus of something here?
I thought we had workshop consensus.
For annexation?
Yeah, to talk about the both of them.
And should it come back in February or March, or, we don't have a second meeting in?
We should have two workshops in February.
Okay.
I would let the administrator work on that schedule, because she has two burning issues. One is the.
Yeah.
The ordinance.
I just don't want to miss the boat.
Right.
In Sea Flagler Beach and.
Right.
Yeah, see if we can fit it in.
Depending on who's available, you know, that we have the ability to schedule at least two. We committed to two workshops a month.
But we only have one meeting.
But that's.
We can add a workshop.
We can add workshops. We can add, we can do the two workshops. Okay. All right, I've only got a, I've only got a couple of things before we go. What time is it? Wow, it's 9:30. So Commissioner Carney mentioned the special, special exception process. Luckily, I've had some conversations with Sean already, you know, about the processes, and nothing that comes back yet for us to have to worry on. I just relayed my concerns on, on the processes, and I'll, I'll explain my concerns is, and they somewhat echo what you said, is, is really they've, they've come back because the planning board hasn't been clear in stating the, their conclusions on the nine separate points. So if they, if they state the substantial competent evidence that they are using to validate one through nine, then it makes it a lot harder for a appeal, because they've done, they've stated publicly what their positions are on the one through nine, and it forces really the discussion of the substantial competent evidence on each of them. I believe Sean and Adam have modified the application to kind of work toward that. But it's, you know, if you, if we look at, because it's very confusing, I mean, having to do these now, again, it's hard explaining that to the public on what our role is in this process. So I even think that, that varies from place to place as well, right, Sean? The, the, the ability of what the, the planning board can do, not everybody, I mean, and against.
Yes.
What do you want to see? Because it could be the commission that, that does special exceptions. We've placed it in the hands of the planning board, doesn't have to be that way. So that's another discussion, but that's, that's currently how the process is. We can clean up that process or we. clean up that process or we can look at, at changing it. It just makes our meetings longer, um, you know, more items on it. But, um, uh, and I think, right, doing really good due diligence on, on who we nominate. No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure at all.
Um, but, uh, that's my point on the special exception. You picked up on a, a flaw that I think, um, we can, we can fix. And then the other is code enforcement. Um, and I wish everybody had stayed so I could've said this, but 99% of the issues that we're dealing with is, is, is not adhering to the site plan, the applicant's not adhering to the site plan, or, or violations not getting addressed. So, you know, they either have 54 seats or they have 104. Um, we either need to change the code to allow for Uber Eats and, and different things, but I mean, that's the one that's been permitted. And that's why, ma'am, ultimately, I'm thinking, we've gotta just solve the problem because it's, you know, behavior has changed in four years and it's gonna continue to, to change. So we have to kind of be flexible somewhat. Um, and none of it, I think, is perfect, but I would rather try and pull traffic or, you know, parked vehicles off of the right of ways and into that than, than staying on the right of ways and creating issues. But I do think, um, when we, when, when there's issues presented to where a business may not be in compliance, um, right, we have the new code, the magistrate, there's processes we didn't have in place before. Um, or they come back to us and modify their special exception or site plan development order. But we can't, um, a lot of good points were made about granting leniency and, and the effects that it has if we're not diligent in, in adhering to the code. Um, you made great points about what's the future of the hammock gonna look like and, and parking issues because of, um, it's a destination. I mean, people are going to the hammock because of, of it, you know, regardless of the place, they like their own place, but they're driving across the bridge and going to the hammock because it's a great environment.
And that, and that whole area, once the sewer's in place, that whole area's gonna change. Boom, just overnight. It's gonna be bang. All those RCs are gonna be C, are gonna be Cs. You know? Yeah. It's, it's gonna be, it's, and I'm really, really concerned about that, but there's not a whole lot we can do about it.
All right.
That's scary.
My thoughts, my final comments. Um, motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
Okay, we're adjourned.